Hey Jim.
Hi Joe.
I can add more light here, but it's not working. It's making it worse.
No, you need you need it on your face, not in your not on your back.
Yeah. Hey guys.
Good evening.
Dave, how's it going?
Excellent. Fantastic job last meeting, Joe.
Oh, thank you.
And Chip.
As long as he didn't fall asleep, that's good.
Those were auditions, right?
Yeah.
A natural. He was a natural.
That was a that was a ruba.
Excellent.
Got out of there just in time, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
So Joe, I've just made you co-host in the Zoom call, just in case anything happens to my connection.
All right, great. Don't be skipping out now.
No, no. Just in case of technical difficulties. I used to do with, you know, do the same thing with Amy. She was clerk, yeah.
That's why she gave up.
No.
He has fear of it happening.
All right. Chip? It's Chip. I thought I saw Chip. Do we have his audio?
He had an audio problem, I think. He's still trying to connect his audio.
And who else isn't here? Mickey isn't here yet. Okay. Joe, you have the legal notice, right?
Yes.
Perfect.
I got a cold. I have a cold too, so.
Oh, yeah.
Be with me.
Here come the excuses.
I'd rather I'd rather have the flu. For some reason, I get a cold that lasts for like months. Can't get rid of it. You know, flu, you throw up and you're done. Cold, I don't know. It's a change of seasons kind of thing.
Still looking for Chip's audio and Mickey. I'll break back.
Sure, I'm charged, Joe.
Yeah, he gone.
All right, there's Chip. All right. Well, we have a quorum. I strongly see Mickey. I didn't hear from him, so I assumed he's just running late, but we have a quorum. I think we can get started. We'll start the transcript.
I think it's already recording, Dave.
No, it's recording. I just had to double check where the transcript button was, but I think we got it. Sure we're on. Okay. Still not seeing them. Why am I not seeing?
It says it's enabled, but it's not showing up.
Well, it's showing up on my screen up in the left-hand corner is recording just under my face.
Yeah, but the.
Okay, but they are you seeing them on your screen?
I'm not seeing the the transcript though. You're talking about the.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, when we talk, it's supposed to type it out. Yeah.
And I don't know why. Know something changed for this meeting room. Sorry, folks. Appreciate your patience. We're just trying to enable this. Live transcript here. Captions. Strange.
There's a button down. It says hide captions.
Yeah, those are the there's usually one that says enable transcriptions, and I'm not seeing it. And it's strange. One second. Yeah, there's supposed to be a live transcript at the bottom of the screen, and you enable it. And I don't see live transcript anywhere, so I'm I'm not sure what else to do. That option just is not enabled for some reason. So we'll have to proceed.
Just go with it.
Yeah, okay. So sorry for that, folks. But we're ready to get started. So we'll call the meeting to order for the town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for September 28th, 2022. We'll call of members. Jim McBane.
Here.
Chip Tarbell. Chip, you're on mute.
Here.
Thank you. Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Tom Lucy.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
And I don't see Mickey Feely yet. Again, must be running late. So we'll look for him to join and acknowledge when he does for the record. With that, let's proceed to the reading of the legal notice, Joe. If you please.
Consistent with the governor's orders, expanded certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number 13017158592, meeting ID 88561323762, passcode 229141. Please use only dial-in or computer, not both, as audio feedback will distort this meeting. The meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in in alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Ramel, town engineer at 7812466308 as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your requests. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessory barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, 23-27, Alexander A. Cavello and N. F. Cavello individually and as trustees of the Alexander and A. Cavello 2004 revocable trust and the N. F. Cavello 2004 revocable trust. Application for a special permit under Article 4, Section 190-22A, 1F of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to add an accessory apartment to a single-family dwelling. The property shown on map 16 Lot Postles 001 of the excesses map and maps and is located at 226 Main Street. 323-28, Co-Ric LLC, application for a determination and or finding which respects to continuation and extension of non-conforming use is under Article 9, Section 1950 of the Wakefield zoning bylaws related to a certain proposed renovations and additions to the premises in the building for use as a three-family dwelling. The property is shown on map 12 Lot Postles 77A of the assessors map and is located at 35 Chestnut Street. 423-29, Joseph A. Curley, trustee of the Micro Realty Trust, application for an appeal of a decision for the building inspector pursuit of MGLC 48, Section A of Article 10, Section 19065 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to applicant's desire to write, to repair and or reconstruct an eight-unit dwelling that was destroyed by a fire in 2020, sorry. Applicant is also seeking a finding respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming building structure for use under Article 9, Section 190-50B of the Wakefield zoning bylaws related to the repair and or reconstruction of an eight-unit dwelling that was destroyed by a fire in 2020. The property is shown as map 20 Lot Postles 131 and 132 of the excesses map and is located at 10-12 Chestnut Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay, so in addition to the new hearings you just heard read, we have three continued hearings from previous meetings as well as a few other matters to cover as well later in the meeting. So we'll start with our first continued hearing. 22-52, 53, 54, and 55, Maria Energy Corp. at 356 Wall Street. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Brian. The record attorney Brian McGreal representing the applicant, Naria Energy Corporation on this matter. When we last met at your board, you might recall that we were instructed to meet with Mr. McBane on our signage to try to kind of fine tune it. Go over it in some detail with him as the sign expert for the board. A look at the relief that we would needed, some of the appropriate issues of the sign for him to highlight them and discuss them. We did do that. So I and Jim, as he usually does, astutely pointed out some deficiencies in our sign plan that had to be corrected, relabeled, recategorized, which we have done, and that was submitted to you and John Selly, who's our architect and dealing with signage, who's here tonight. Will handle that. So in addition, in addition to in addition to John, Chris Taimula is also here from GPI Site Civil, even though we think we're pretty much numbered Site Civil, but in case any questions. And again, Mike Durant is here on behalf of Naria Energy and Pat McLaughlin is also here on behalf of Naria. So we will go through the signage. I also submitted some draft conditions from what I can remember were issues of the board that they wanted that you wanted addressed in condition. So I submitted those and I guess after the signage, I'd like to go over those if I may, Mr. Chair. So I think we're hopefully advancing this. We think on our end, we're pretty much at the end and hopefully have addressed all the concerns of the board. If not, we construct, we discuss them tonight. But we'd like to move this matter along as quickly as possible, and hopefully tonight we would like to have a closure if that's possible. So with that said, if I may, if I can hand it over to John. John, are you here?
Yes, I'm here, Brian. Thank you.
So Brian, if I can, John, if just interrupt, just briefly apologize. I just want to recognize Mickey Feely. He is now joined us officially for the record. Welcome. So he is noted on this hearing as well. If it does look like we're nearing the conclusion, I just want to make sure that we identify before we proceed that we've got all the final plans in our possession, right? And we identify them.
Yeah, and the other thing too, and that's fine. The other thing also we submitted is part of the John submitted, and I submitted on behalf and on his behalf was the board had wanted some more renderings, a couple of different views and some night views. So John, you'll also be able to go over that, correct?
Yes, yeah, I can run through the signage plan, and then I'll show the renderings to get everyone.
The board had asked for that, and we didn't forget about that, and I sent that in last week to the board. So Dave, the the do you want me to address the final plans at this point, Dave, so far, where we are anyways, or just want to wait on that to see where we go?
Oh, we can wait. I just want to get the initial presentation, but I just want to make sure, because we've got the the handouts and the information you've been sending, but I just want to make sure we've got everything clearly identified so they can be, you know, stamped accordingly, and we know what is the final set. That's all. But sure, because we told you the initial presentation.
Yeah. Thanks. Great. Thank you.
All right, back to you, John. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I will bring up my screen here. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again. This for the record, I'm John Selly, architect with Phase Zero Design Architects for the project. So as as Brian noted, we met with with Mr. McBane to go through this, made some clarifications. So I'll just give a quick overview of the signage that we're proposing. Walk you quickly through the areas that we're seeking relief. And then I'll flip over to the renderings here to give you a good sense of the visual of what it is that we're proposing. So zoom in here on the site plan, just to describe the overall signage that we're looking for. So initially, to start with, we have two freestanding signs, which are existing signs which were approved in 2016. We're proposing to reface those signs. Okay, on the building itself, we have three signs. We have a Naria logo over the main front entry. And we're reserving reserving two signs for the tenant signage. So there will be a co-brand, a coffee shop, deli, something like that, that that deal is not finalized yet, but two tenant signs, one facing Lowell Street and one facing Vernon Street on the building. In addition to the building signage, we we're proposing two signs on the fueling canopy. So one Naria logo on the canopy facing Lowell Street, the second logo facing to the east here, visible as you as you approach the site along Vernon Street. Okay, in terms of the relief that we're seeking, there four areas that we're seeking relief. The first has to do with the area of the freestanding signs. So we're proposing to increase that slightly simply by covering the structure of the sign. So I can show you graphically what that means here here in a moment. Second area of relief that we're seeking are for sign heights in excess of the three foot, which is allowed by ordinance. And that will be on the Naria logo or the main entry. And also on the Naria logos on the canopy, each of those three are taller than the the three foot allowed. And speaking with Mr. McBane, we've understood there's no provision for additional signage on the fueling canopy. So we're seeking relief to to allow us to have those logo signs on the the fueling canopy itself. And the fourth area of relief we're seeking is for the canopy logo that's facing to the to the east to have it facing east rather than directly towards Vernon Street. Okay, so I'll talk through those in a little bit more specificity at this point. So on the freestanding signs, the existing signs are held between the two existing six by six structural posts. And I can just show you what the existing sign looks like here quickly. So these are the existing signs. So the the posts are exposed on either side, and the signs are carried in between the the posts. What we're proposing in the refacing of these existing signs is to cover those posts up for a somewhat cleaner appearance. So the new panels that we apply to the signs would go from outside edge of post to outside edge of post. So the relief we're seeking here is for that additional area that is given to the sign by covering those posts up. It's pretty pretty straightforward there. Okay. The two signs that are taller than the three foot allowed, one is the that Naria logo over the main entry. And that's detailed right here. That sign is five foot six inches tall. And then we have the canopy logos here, which are four feet tall. Okay. One thing I didn't mention on the overall signage package, we also have a couple of window decals that we've also detailed here on the sheet as requested by Mr. McBane. So we've got those included. Those are well under the allowed square footage for window signage. Okay, so that's a sort of quick overview here on on what we're looking to do and what we're where we're seeking relief. So to help illustrate that a little bit better, I think you all have seen this view of the project previously. Again, we have the, you know, the main Naria logo over the main entry, two tenant signs on the building, the freestanding signs on either side of the site, and then the logos on the on the canopy. So then we took a look at this at at nighttime to give you a sense of what portions of those signs, what portions of the site will be illuminated at night. So you can see the internal illumination on those logos. It's not the whole circle, if you will. It's it's really the sort of top arc and bottom arc, and then the letters that that spell out Naria, which are illuminated on those logos on both the freestanding signs, the building and the and the canopies. Okay, and then we put together another view from the other other side of the site as you're approaching on Vernon Street. The Dolberg School off tier right here behind the building. And then taking a look at that one from that view, what it looks like at night as well, to give you a good sense of of just what portions of it are being illuminated. Okay, so that's that's basically what we have prepared tonight for you. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about the signage at this point.
Can you refresh my memory? What's what's lit on the canopy? Besides the Naria signs?
Yes. Yeah, I know. I'll just keep this slide on right now. So we have certainly the lighting underneath the the canopy, right for safety and for
Sure, sure.
visuals underneath it, but on the on the fascia of the canopy itself, we have this green band which has an LED strip light in it, and it's like an acrylic green band, so it has a green glow to it. And then along the top, you'll see this wall washer. Basically, it's an LED light in a cove at the very top of that fascia that washes some light down the down the fascia itself. And that runs around the perimeter of the canopy. There's this view, and I'll go back to the other view, which shows a similar approach. I can zoom in on that a bit, too.
It looks more blue than green.
Yeah, the the top fascia band of the canopy is blue. So when you wash that that top portion with the LED light, it is blue. The band in the middle is a green band that that glows as well.
Why do you need to have any of that glowing at night? To me, there's so much light here. I just don't think those bands being lit are necessary at all. Or the fascia of that canopy. In my humble opinion.
I would add to that, Chip, the the same type of light under the building to the left.
I'm less concerned with that, but I think when we've done these other stations with new canopies, we've tried to avoid this sort of spaceship look around the canopy. And I just didn't know if I missed something in the recording from the last meeting, or this has been on here. We just haven't talked about it. Or are we just seeing it tonight?
Yeah, Dave, I agree with the spaceship look, but we also, I think the past couple of meetings have talked about trying to reduce lighting on buildings throughout town. So I mean, it's sort of all goes together in my mind.
Yeah, I would say none of this is is new material. It's probably just illustrated here for you could for you to see it a bit better in the in the nighttime rendering.
No, that the lighting is all new, pretty much. I don't think we've discussed lighting yet. We never discussed an LED. We never discussed an LED band around the whole canopy.
I I think what John Saintip is, it it you're correct, it hasn't been discussed. It's been on the plans, but it hasn't been highlighted because this is the first time you've seen it.
Alright, that's that's fair.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Thanks, Brian.
And you haven't discussed it. You're right.
Yeah. So to me, that's just over. I mean. The size of the signs, I I get that they need to be a little bigger up on a canopy, the the one over the door, I get needs to be a little bigger on that space. I'm okay with those. I'm okay with the back lid on the on the signs. Um, but I'm not okay with the, if people want to call it the spaceship or that's just way too much, that's too big in area. And doesn't quite, Jim, maybe you can help me. If if that's their logo colors, doesn't that then make that whole awning part of the sign?
Uh, this is. You know, this is not the overlay district, so it's a little bit different. And we've we've done this with others. In the in the case of that sign that's on the canopy. One, it is not all, oh, th- these are all occupancy signs, alright? And as an occupancy sign, it has it, it's only defined as mounted to a building. This is not a building. That doesn't mean it isn't appropriate, and the canopy itself, the thickness is is three feet, so there's no reason why. This particular one can't be three feet. You take the image on the other so on the Linfield side. If we could just go to the black and the the that side of the building for a minute, the other side for the canopy. Now, why do we need a sign on the canopy and a freestanding sign one beside the other? Isn't is is that not enough signs for anybody? The other one, on the other hand, is, you know, it's pointing down Lowell Street, so people coming up Lowell Street will see that. We see before they see other things. This one is like overkill.
I would agree.
But I would prefer to see them stay within at least the three feet, and we give dispensation to have us a second occupancy sign. That is not pointed towards the street. Well, it is actually, and the other one is occupied towards the street, but basically. You can have one occupancy sign per side of street, but on your building. Not on the canopy. So if we want to allow them to have an occupancy sign on the canopy, I'm just saying. I don't think it's necessary on this side of the canopy.
Now, the freestanding right there, I mean, and in theory, you can see the building too, so you're looking at three Norias.
Right, so so then then I have the freestanding sign. As pointed out, the sign is expanded across the whole face of the support system. Now, I I question, and I don't know anybody knows yet, and and because this is a new question. Is all the mechanics of that sign were between the two posts? Now, when you bring that sign forward, the mechanics, as you can see with the numbers and the like, are going to have some depth. Which means this sign is going to be deeper than the six foot that the previous one was, because it's got the electronics. That basically you're going to have some effect, whether that's an inch or two on either side or three inches or four inches, I have no idea. Just understand that they have, they are building within the framework of the previous approval. But not within the thickness of the previous approval.
I'm not sure I followed that last part, Jim. If if all the mechanics and wiring for the freestanding has to be within the sign. It's not going to run down the sides and make this whole thing even bigger, right?
The sign, yeah, the sign, the the old sign basically was six inches, because it was spanning between the posts.
I get that.
Now that this sign is overlapping the posts, you've got a certain amount of electronics and mechanics that will probably make this. A few inches bigger and thicker, whether that's a concern to us or not, it's up to us, and we just mean that we would have to. The previous approval that we gave will have to change within whatever we give them at this particular time.
Well, are you conjecturing? Why doesn't the applicant tell us if there's going to be anything beyond? They're here. John, why don't you tell us what's going to be?
Typically, that cabinet would be three inches deep. Applied to the face of the post, so you'd have the six inch post and three inches on on either side of that.
Can you show like use your mouse?
So you're talking about the foot, the the width of the sign being a foot?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a side view of it here, but basically the the thickness of the cabinet that would be applied to the posts would be three inches. So yeah, the the full depth of it would be twelve inches.
Why do you need this extra space?
And we we could look at that and see if we could reduce the depth of those cabinets. You know, to to one or two inches. We have the six inch depth of the post to get any. You know, wiring up and things like that behind it. Three inches is just typically what we what we did use on these.
Yeah, to to me, I think kind of by right of reusing the sign as. Refacing the sign as it exists. So I would look at fitting your sign inside the posts. I don't, I don't think you need to be any bigger than they currently are. And that's what you're asking to do is go bigger to put your signs over the posts.
Right, we thought it was a bit of a cleaner look to to just run from outside face to outside face with a clean cabinet over the face of it.
But where specifically would that cabinet be? John, can you go back also to the picture of the current?
Of the existing one, sure.
Yeah, because that was helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So where these existing cabinets are between the existing posts. Our cabinet would be applied to the to the outside face of the post, spanning from outside of post to outside of post. So you wouldn't see this sort of vertical line of the post.
Okay.
Let me see if I could, I could probably sketch over top of that.
No, no, that I understood. I thought that you were alluding to some additional component. Or hardware that would now be exposed because they're going edge to edge, and maybe I'm just missing something. Yeah, it's not, so the sign.
Three inch greater width. Because they're just surface mounting them on to the post. They're not going in between the posts anymore.
So if you were to look at the sign from the side, it would be thicker.
By six inches.
Correct.
And, yeah, and the face of the signs are bigger. Because they're extending side to side, no longer within the posts.
There'll be another foot basically in the sign width as well.
About another foot, it would be a foot, right?
More than what's there.
Right.
Six inches more, three on either side. He said it's a three inch cabinet.
But you're also spanning on the surface, Greg. The surface is becoming bigger as well.
Yes, I I mean, I think we're jumping between two issues too quickly.
Everything.
Still talking about the side, because I thought, to me, I I don't, making these things a few inches bigger on the side and even on the. From front on, I'd rather have a nicer sign than something you're just going to be driving by quickly. You know, not notice. You know. When you're ninety degrees to it, you're not going to be driving like this, or someone looking at it noticing, oh, that's a few inches bigger. I'd rather have a nicer sign.
And would you rather have a bigger sign than what's there?
If it's by simply a few inches like this to make it nicer, yeah. If they were trying to blow it up and double the size, no.
I don't, I personally don't know that one is any better than the other, quite frankly, as far as appearance. I only, I only, I only bring it up as the fact that it not all what that appears is what it is, basically. I want everybody to understand that there's dimensional changes here, even though the sign height is the same.
Well, you're technically looking at the post anyway, so if they're overlaying the posts, you know, you know, it doesn't really get. It's not really any bigger, because you're still looking at the posts, and then they're going over the post, so. It's not like they're not like they're going past the post, they're they're just reu- they're using that space that's already given it to them, right? So but in the thickness, I don't know if you're gonna, if someone's gonna realize this, this, it's three inches thicker on both sides, a total of six inches thicker. Right?
I agree. I I kind of agree. I have no problem with the freestanding signs. I also agree with. To take the lighting off the canopy and to take that additional. Uh, Noria sign off the Vernon Street side of the canopy as well. Those comments are are spot on. But I have no problem with these signs.
Yeah, I think I think I tend to agree with you, Tom. I mean, I know I raised the other one, but I I think we need you to take these one at a time. Board members and just get get some consensus instead of hopping around. So does anyone have any strong feeling about? Allowing them to have the signs as presented, which would be a bigger surface area, they're going from forty-three square feet to fifty-five, as noted in the relief. And they'd be thicker.
I guess I'd like to know how the side is being treated. Is it going to look like a three inch panel, the post? A line and then a three inch panel, or are we putting a solid piece on the sides?
So I'll answer that. I I think you would see the three inch side of the the cabinets. Then the six inches of the post, and then the three inch side of the cabinet on the on the other face. But it would be both the cabinet and the post would be gloss white in color. So they would match, so it would be a more or less more or less monolithic appearance.
Is there a way to put a panel there on the side, just so you, so they all look like it's one big sign, front to back? Otherwise, now you you're seeing seams and stuff that, you know, I know it's just getting that. I don't really like that look.
I think that could be done, yes.
I think it makes, Joe, I think it makes it look fatter. If it's broken down with a post exposed and the panels exposed. It breaks it down basically appearance and makes it look a little bit smaller. I wouldn't add a panel in there. It gets, I mean, it just gets too fat. It makes it look fat.
Downplayed what's concerns either, but I mean, we're just talking about. Inches on this direct side, unless you're walking down the street. Now, there is walkers, obviously. It's right near the Dolberg. But I think most of the people that are even walking down the street aren't going to be checking out, you know, uh, what, a probably minuscule seam between signposts?
Yes, I am.
Right, just the overall thickness, the width is going from six inches, which is the width of the post today. Everything in between the posts to twelve inches roughly. Unless they can make the panel smaller, thinner, he said, but typically three inches, so. You go from six inches to twelve inches in width. Right?
Yep.
Right, yeah.
How tall is this sign? Seventeen feet?
They're foot wide. Yes, yeah, seventeen foot, four inches.
Which was what was approved on the previous sign.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
The only other thing on this particular sign is that when the tenant arrives, we should make sure that that their sign comes back to us. For all of them.
Yeah, I think it's in the draft conditions, I thought I read already.
Yeah. Alright, so yea or nay on this? I I'm I'm okay with it. I just needed to better understand it, but I'm okay with it. Sounds like, Tom, you're okay with it.
I'm okay.
Does anyone else have a strong? Feeling either way?
I I can, Dave, I can relax my opinion on this if we can come to a conclusion on the canopy.
Okay.
There's a give and take here.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I I would suggest that the give and take is get rid of this side. And on the far side, make it three foot, so it becomes somewhat legal. Um, on the, but on the far side, it gives a little more recognition from coming down Lowell Street out of Wakefield. So there's only one sign that's three foot high, which is the canopy height, and it's on the far side.
Okay, so now you've now you've done two things here, Joe. So we're we're all in agreement that the Noria sign on the canopy from this view. Should go because we've already got two other signs you can see. Right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, now on the other view, John, can you please go to the other view to show the other side of the canopy? Jim, you're suggesting that this sign should also be smaller, three feet instead of four feet?
It should be of a legal height, which is three feet.
Jim, if I can just add, pipe in on this, because you've always talked about with signage to make it, you know, whether it complies or not, to make it. Make it um, appropriate um, from a, you know, for how it fits. You know, I'm just wondering if you shrink this down, you know, the the way this kind of goes down below the canopy and a little bit above it. I think it gives character to that canopy, and if you shrink it down, I just think, again, for, you know, for. A small area to come into compliance, you might actually hurt the look of the of the whole thing, just to consider that.
Well, the other, the other thing that you're not seeing here is this, in this schematic. Uh, the trees are not existent. So from this view, you're also going to see the freestanding sign in actuality.
Oh, the far one off to the right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So so does that sign there? I mean, I can't really tell. It hangs down and goes above the canopy? Is that right?
The canopy's three feet.
So then I guess that's my question, does it just, maybe it doesn't matter, just go below or does it go below and above? Is it, does it hang a foot below?
Both.
I mean, I guess either way, no other, I understand what Brian's saying, but I I don't, I could be wrong, but I don't know of any other. Canopy sign in town that's bigger than the canopy that. For the, you know. That would be, we would say would take away the character of something.
I think it's subjective, Greg. I I just personally think it looks good like that. I really do. I mean, that's my opinion. I think if you, you know, to shrink it and just put it as a stamp on the canopy, I just think it gives it gives a little character.
What size is the sign compared to the canopy? It's a, it's a, the size is four feet, the canopy is three?
That's five feet.
No, no, John, please confirm.
That sign is four feet.
Mister Chair, if I, Mister Chair, if I may, Chris Tmuller, Senior Project Manager from from Green and Peterson, the civil consultants here. So the sign itself, the canopy itself is three feet tall. And then the the round Naria is four feet tall, so it's six inches, the the round circle is about six inches above the canopy and six inches below the canopy. But the sign itself, the main focal point of the sign itself is is basically matching the top of the the bottom of the top of the canopy. With a little crown above and a little crown below. That's that's just, that's Naria's standard sign for the canopies, which is, you know, no different than. You know, what what Irving does or Kamal Farm does, or a lot of the other guests, guest, you know, clients that we work with. So if that sort of clears things up a little bit on the size of the sign.
It may be what the somewhere, but we haven't allowed it, I don't think, in other places.
That doesn't bother me that much.
So you can see in this photo that the the rectangular box, that would essentially be the canopy itself. And then the crown on the top and the bottom, that's will be sticking above, so it's, again, it's six inches.
Six inches. Yeah, sorry, this is John. I don't, I don't know if you can hear me now. I don't know if my audio may have dropped out, but that's what I was trying to, trying to explain.
You're back.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm 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 okay with this too. Again, there's some give and take here. I just think if they're. If they're willing to get rid of the canopy, banning the lighting and that other Noria sign on the outside of canopy. And I'm okay having this one. Again, I would tend to agree with Brian. It has a little something that, the way it is. And the freestanding being what we just discussed, so. That would be my take. We'll give a little take. And we move on and not spend an hour on signs, on these signs.
As long as we're in agreement that those lights are going.
Alright, John. I haven't earned any agreement yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, this is John. I'm going to defer to uh, Brian or or Pat McLaughlin on that, the question of the lighting. Yeah, I'm this is John. I'm gonna defer to uh, Brian or or Pat McLaughlin on that the question of the lighting.
Good, good evening. Uh, this is Tony Almer. Um, I'm sorry, what's the question on the lighting? One more time, just to make sure we're answering the right question.
The board. Does not want to see. The LED lighting, the green and blue bands around the top of the canopy.
And also that wa- and the. White that washed the side of the canopy. We want the canopy to be dark. From the bottom of the canopy up. Can be white, but I mean, not lit.
I assume it look like that because of the banding, but.
This Mister Chairman, may I ask one question if you, I'm with Nuriya, so just trying to to shit to ask one question. Going away, given the green away. It's okay. When it gets dark at night, the canopy won't be seen. Is this what you're trying to achieve, that you don't wanna see the canopy? On the top of the blue, there there is a small band sits on top of the canopy all around with the with the blue. Blue whitewash lights. That lights little bit the blue, gives little character to it. Given up the white, given up the green, would it be possible? With you to, and we have no problem getting the sign off one side of the canopy and as you suggested. Would it be possible to give us um, lay away to at least leave the blue band on top of the canopy all around? Just to to give little character to it during the night? Would it be possible?
I think the point is we don't want it to have character throughout the night. We want it to be as dark as possible for the neighbors, in my opinion. Mister Chairman, the the other thing to talk about right now, I think. And unless I missed it somewhere. Is my understanding is they're asking for twenty-four seven. So that comes into play with the lighting of this canopy as well.
You mean the hours of operation of the entire site?
Correct.
Mistake and chip, that's specifically in the conditions, so.
Yeah, that's what that I mean, that's that that is what they wanna do. So Chip is correct.
So we're talking about this blue glowing all night long.
Well, I that was a discussion that um, in the draft conditions, I put that the. The lighting had to be discussed. That certain lighting could be dimmed or turned off after a certain hour. Um, so you know, we don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I just don't think you need the glowing band at all. I mean, when it. This has come up at other stations and we haven't allowed it. So not that there's. Specific. Criteria for one to the other to the other. I mean, the other, the other point is we're allowing diesel here and we've never allowed diesel anywhere in town before, so. To me, Noria has gotten a lot of breaks. And to be talking about a blue lit canopy, I. Think is a very small thing.
And Chip, to your point too, if there's gonna be twenty-four hour operations, I'm sure that lighting underneath the canopy is probably considered safety lighting. It would have to be on. I'm sure that can't be. Offer dimmed, so if the canopy itself is bright underneath, why do we need any lights on top?
That's my point to begin with.
Mister Chairman, um. We will give up the blue band and the green band on the canopy. We will give up those lightings.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and and I, if if I may introduce myself, Pat McLaughlin with Naria, I'm part of. Part of the team here. Sorry that we have a a few extra members this evening that uh, you folks haven't met before. Um, just to jump in on that, when when we're speaking about. What 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 elements of the canopy feature we're giving up here, we're talking about. The the lighted elements of them, but during the daytime hours, the blue and green. Yeah, aspects are still there. They're just not illuminated. So that, yeah, you still see the daytime image, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. They can be colored and they will be seen during the day. They just won't be lit at night. That's the part we're trying to avoid, the excess lighting. As much as possible.
And and that. That includes the white fasher.
Cor- correct, uh, through you, Mister Chairman, the white fasher, we don't have any lights on it anyway. We only have, uh, if you can look at top of the canopy, there is. An inch or so light around the top of the blue that washes down. Then strip inside the green where it lights, the white does not light at all. So we we will give up. Um. We will give up those two, the blue and the green, so there is no lights on the canopy on top. And thank you for your consideration of leaving the Nuriya. Sign six inches above and and under for your consideration on that one. It's a make, it makes a big difference. Thank you so much.
So the only thing that remains lit at night then would be the Noriega sign on this side. Everything else is black. Route, no light.
Understood. Except under the canopy, the lighting under the canopy, correct?
Yeah. Safety lighting.
Yep. Okay, so we're in agreement. Freestanding stays as presented. This Noria stays as presented, the one on the other side is removed. And the lighting on the bands around the canopy are removed. Agreed?
Right.
Yeah. Are there other elements of the sign? Package that we need to discuss?
Um, I don't think we've seen what the pumps look like and what's being lit on them.
John, can you address that?
Yeah, I'll do my best and and Noria, folks, please jump in and correct me if I miss anything. Basically, the the only things illuminated on the pumps would be the. The typical pricing displays, the readouts that you would need to to see as you're fueling up your vehicle.
There's no TV screens? None of that stuff with ads?
There is on the TV on, those are standard with the pumps.
Okay, is there a pump schematic somewhere in the sign? Or in these plants? Does it show the pump design? Usually we see those.
No, we don't have that.
And what's on the and what's on the top band of the pump?
There is a shroud. With a Noria logo on it, but it's not illuminated.
John, can you pull up that? Yeah.
So the only thing illuminated on these are the. Are the digital.
So I think I think Tony said there is a a TV display. Tony, Pat, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's in.
And does the TV display have sound?
We can, we can control, we can control the sound on it. We can lower it and many communities, we lower it depending on the communities. And those TV don't run until unless you're pumping fuel. If you're not pumping fuel, it does not run.
Right, I was thinking about three AM in the morning. Two people come in and now all of a sudden we got two, two TVs coming on.
Though though.
With advertising in the neighborhood.
Those sounds are very low. Those sounds, we 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 adhere to that and those sounds are controlled. Because we don't wanna be.
Can, is there a timer on them that they can be? That the TVs can be eliminated from eleven at night till six in the morning?
I'm not sure.
Tony, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure of that either. Um. We. Yeah, I don't know how to, I don't know how to commit to one way or the other on that. We can talk to the manufacturer on that.
We can, we can keep the volume low during the twenty-four hours. We don't need to have loud voices. Um, we uh, we acknowledge that and we usually in many, many, many locations. We have them very low, day and night.
Can it be muted at all?
I mean, Chip, Chip, you uh, you know, it could be a condition that. You know, the the board retains jurisdiction. If they're too loud, then then we have to, you know, we retain jurisdiction to make us a lower them. Well, I would like to understand if they can be turned off. I I second Chip's motion. I mean, it. Do they need to really go on at midnight and be, you know, eleven eight PM and on? Can we just, if we can control the volume, maybe we can control the power. And just turn them off after a certain time. And secondly, I think I, Joe, was about to chime in and I was having the same thought. I've seen these pumps where there's a mute button. If the customer doesn't wanna be bothered with it, they can hit mute. So they should.
Yeah, that that definitely.
I believe there is a mute button on them. And yes, we uh, customers has the ability to do so.
Okay, okay. Uh, maybe it's a standard thing now, but that's, yeah. So I would like to understand if that's, if we have to condition it, Brian, perhaps, but. I think we need to understand that. If it's possible to to have them off at night. Don't see the reason for ads at three AM, four AM.
Question in my mind, and I don't know if we've discussed it before, maybe we have, and I don't think I missed any on this, but maybe I did. Did we? I mean, is there a need for the twenty-four hour service? I mean. This is especially the lights right underneath. This is right across from a couple houses. I mean, that's gonna be pretty bright. Uh, like, that's just one of the many issues from, we're talking about sound, we're talking about TVs coming on, we're talking about bright lights coming on. Um, right across from a few. You know, uh, houses that are directly across the street. I I maybe I missed that discussion. I don't think I did, uh, but that seems like something kind of being glossed over that we're. We're going right to twenty-four hour service here, which. I I mean, I don't know how much you're gonna be gaining anyways, or if we even wanna can wanna grant that. That seems like just something we're we're kind of skipping to.
Has it already been discussed? It doesn't ring a bell with me either until we start.
I I think we did. We talked about, that's my recollection anyways. I think we talked about the store.
We talked about the fact that we might have the dim lights uh, on certain signs in in in. And because of it being open. All the time. And it was also a discussion, I believe, about, you know, potential safety. The board uh, talked about that. Um. But uh, the safety part might have been at TAC. That might have been at TAC where they didn't have an issue with it. They they might have talked about that.
And I I know we've talked about others, specifically the one at the junction there, safety lights inside the store.
Yeah, I mean, Pat, can you, can you or uh, Mike or somebody talk about the influence to you of having this open twenty-four?
And just for context, to me, the store is different than the. The gas. If we can somehow eliminate the lights being on there. The the canopy lights all night, or if they can be. Off, you know, like we've talked about with um. Garages having motion sensors that turn on. Uh, lights when people pull up or something, although I know if you're at the gas station, you want the lights to be on to let people know you're open. But I I think that's my. My concern is less the store, the store lighting being on, because there's a attendant in there that. Is less of a concern to me than the canopy, under canopy lights being bright all night into these people's houses. Um, pretty much directly across the street.
But to me, Greg, the. Uh, uh, those lights on and. Motion sensor occupancy sensor would be more annoying coming on, going off, coming on. But I'm with you on how valuable is the need to be open twenty-four seven?
Yeah, cuz it to me, either way, coming on or going off, my, you know, sleep cycle or whatever is a lot more valuable than one or two people a night getting a couple gallons of gas.
Why don't we let them respond, please? Let's let them respond. Our point's been made.
Hey, thank you, Mister Chairman. Um. From an experience where we lived in many towns, uh, we found the twenty-four hours on two lines. Line number one. Many customers in our neighborhoods coming from work or running up to work. They try to rush and try to get to a station. Before it closes and many, many times, let's say, station closes at eleven. Some of the employees closes at eleven thirty and go, so. Customer arrived, they have no gas because they came to to look at the site. Those sites are twenty-four hours. The consistency and the certainty for our customers is very important. And that's why um, we do uh, twenty-four hours to service our our uh, our customers. Uh, yes, you're right, um, it slows down a lot from from midnight till four. Uh, many, many of our customers start leaving their homes at four o'clock, going up um. To to go to work and many of our customers comes in back home around eleven, eleven thirty. From work from their second shift. So that's why we open twenty-four hours and um. To to cater to those customers, to tell them exactly every day. That we ha- we are here around the clock and with certainty you can count on us. This is number one. Number two, um, with those sites we're building, uh, we keep people overnight in the stores between cleaning. And filling up the coolers and preparing our stores with the food service and preparing the site for the morning travel. So we are on the site overnight as well, and that's why we open. So we we do two tasks. We cater to our customers that. We have the certainty we are open. And we prepare our sites for the m- morning service. Thank you. I hope I answered, I addressed both questions and I hope we get the leeway to to keep us open twenty-four hours. It's very important to us. We are. And I know it's not, um. It might not play here, but we'll invest when we invest millions on those sites. And this one could be close to four million. We try to to maximize as much as we can. At hours and our business.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
There's a lighting level diagram in the submission, just for those that might wanna look at it.
Yeah, I mean, Chris, Chris, are you there?
Yes, Brian.
Yeah, we, I mean, our lighting uh, photometrics, we do comply with the zoning, correct?
That that is correct. And uh, in in addition to that, uh, because we are, we we do have the six-foot solid fence. Uh, going all the way around the um, the side and rear of the property, um, that further uh, limits any light trespass going on the abundant properties.
Where's that photometric?
I can, I can, I can share my screen, Mister Chair.
Okay, that wasn't in tonight's package, right? I don't see it.
That that has been part of the uh, initial submitted package from day one.
Towards the back of the set, Dave.
Yeah, so it's a, in this, in the PDF, uh, it's basically sheet fifteen of the plan set. Um, so here's our photometric plan. Uh, you can see that this line here is the is the fence line, which runs. All along the back. Of the building, you can see zero point ones, zeros behind the building, zero, zero, zero point five point. I mean, these are light levels that are so insignificant. Um, and then obviously, um, all the lighting is is dark sky compliant. Um, they have um, shields where needed. Um, to minimize any light trespass, uh, and they're all, like I said, they're all facing downwards. Gone are the days of uh, you know, the lighting that is, you know, angled lighting, you know, towards a barter, you know, properties and and into the parking lots. Um, we believe that the lighting plan does uh, does comply with the with your local ordinance for light trespass. Um, and we believe that this is a a safe, adequate lighting plan for the development without any excessive light trespass uh, throughout the entire area.
Chris, is it probably true that because we're getting rid of the uh. Canopy lighting on the on the uh. Band and on the shutting down that it's would even get better?
Yeah, the light, the lighting, Brian, you know, generally in the canopy that's located here. Um, and and losing the the sign that's on the side of the canopy, that is gonna further reduce the amount of lighting onsite, correct?
Probably not a ton, though, because we're in the middle of the site with those, it's not.
It'll it'll have a nominal effect.
Yeah. But from a distance, it will it will help from a distance, probably. Because I'm not gonna be looking right at that. Right, so this, I mean, there's, you know, once you get into the street, you're at zero, but that's light spillage. It's just, but if you're across the street, you'll see the lights on the camp. Right?
You you will see them. These are.
Glowing canopy across the street, right?
Yeah, so there there are, um, you know, obviously from a, from a safety point of view, we wanna make sure that the lighting underneath the canopy is adequate. Um, these are flush mount lighting uh, below the canopy. Uh, they're, they don't, you know, stick six inches below, um, you know, which also further reduces the amount of. Uh, of glare uh, in the area.
I guess my question would be, is there a way? That there could be a certain light level, say up to eleven? And then a different light level that's still safe? That would just be. Something i- if we even allow the twenty-four seven. Which I think is still a question, but is there some way we could? Dim it, and I don't wanna go high and low, but just have it be, you know, on those times that. Aren't very popular and we don't have tons of traffic. Is there a way to reduce it a certain amount? That would still be safe, but would take kind of that glow away?
Sure, and Mister Chairman, I can answer that as well. Um, so, you know, ob- obviously all lighting manufacturers are different. Um, they, uh, my experience has been that you are able to. Uh, reduce the. My experience has been that you are able to uh reduce the amount of glare and the amount of lighting that comes from these lights. Um, there are. Um, programmable dimmers uh that, you know, other clients of ours have used. Um, I'll let um, the folks from the rear answer if if I'm, you know, speaking out of turn. Uh, but typically, uh, that that is a a something that we we can do, you know, whether it's, you know, after eleven o'clock from eleven to three or eleven to four. They could be a certain light level, then they go back to um, the normal lighting levels.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we, Brian had had talked to us a little bit about, um. You know, the appropriateness of of. Of the lighting levels and and relative to to neighbors, right? And so so we did talk a little bit about this and um. I think one thing that that Brian suggested, which would seem pretty fair, right? We. We're here for a long-term investment and we wanna be neighborly to everyone. So what what we've talked about is uh. That sounds like there were, you know, discussions about sound levels as well, right? So it's all within the same realm of discussion. So this lighting issue is is something that we're, you know, we're happy to. Um, to address as as we're open and and we uh, you know, can evaluate what we really think the the sense is. So. You know, we can, we can work with the lighting manufacturer to come up with a lighting design that. That is dimmable in the event that we that we do need to work with uh with the butters to. To address certain areas. So I think that's something that we're open to. I I'm not sure that. You know, right now, at this exact time, if we said that a lighting level X versus a lighting level. You know, Z would, you know, during certain hours would would be a one-stop shop to solve that right now. So I I think we would prefer to keep that. An open-ended discussion, and if the board feels it appropriate to be in, you know, involved in that. If if that arises in the future, then I think we would be okay with that. Brian, does that sound like?
Yeah, I, yeah, I I I think when we had a meeting with Jim, uh. We talked about this with Jim McBane, um, that, you know, that it's certain hours, we're gonna probably have to maybe deal with some money. And and it's what Pat said, it's it's to me, it's um. I would think it would be uh a suggestion that the board could retain jurisdiction. So I I don't think it would be that the board would say, oh, yeah, we'll trust you to deal with the neighbors. I I would say that the board would say, hey, we we're gonna get, we're gonna keep involved if it becomes a problem. I'll have. The jurisdiction authority to bring you in and make you reduce and dim the lights to what uh is appropriate if we need to.
Find what's appropriate.
Well, that's, that's within the jurid- that's for the board. So.
Right, so I, so rather than wait till we open. Why not do something proactively? So that the neighbors aren't like, look, you guys just put this glowing thing in our back, you know, in our front yard and didn't even think about us. Uh, and you have to build it with the dimmable capability. So. I guess what I'd like to know is. What what's this level, high level up to eleven PM? And then how far can you knock it down and still consider it safe? And that's what I'd like to see what we start with. And you, and I'd put it back to Greg, if that would satisfy. Him with the twenty-four seven, or does he just wanna go back to having that discussion?
Well, I, I think so, Chip. I think you're right, cuz I mean, I think we keep hearing about, you know, the the Noria is making a long-term investment. But the neighbors have made long-term investments too, and it's their personal money here too that they're, so I think we, there is a give and take, and I think if we can get it down to. Some sort of acceptable level that is still safe, then then, you know, there is a. You know, we can give on our end on the the twenty-four seven. If we can't, then maybe we can give on the twenty-four seven. The store. Um, the there was, you know, whoa, someone earlier made the point one and point two. The store is a different issue to me. I'm I'm. More okay with that than than, you know, sort of the spaceship effect we're talking about here.
I I think we should have an a- another photographic, photometrics plan that shows a dimmable. Shows the, what the lowest setting is. So we can actually physically see something ahead of time as well. But the system does need to be as as. As Chip said, it has to be. The system has to be in there to begin with. We can't start changing fixtures later.
Yeah, we're we're agreeable to to making the provisions for that, but I just. You know, it's, we're acknowledging that there's an effort that that would need to be made to find what that balance is. So. Uh, it sounds like there wasn't as much support to what I was suggesting, which is let's find that in the field and and set it, you know. The more we go back and forth on plans, I I don't know from my point of view, what, you know, necessarily that that solves a real world issue as um. As much as it does, uh, you know, additional values on on a plan. So I'm just trying to come.
Sorry, I'm happy to solve it in the field before you open.
Yeah, I'm I'm with Chip. As long as it has the capability, then. I don't need, I don't, I don't need to see numbers on a paper.
Okay. Right, reality is reality, but but, you know, it it. And then, so not only does the system need to be dimmable, it also needs to be programmable. Cuz I don't wanna leave it up to. Um, somebody in the store at eleven o'clock switching it from high to low type of thing.
I understood, understood. Mr. Chairman, through you, Chris. Could we do that? Do we have the ability with the fixtures we're looking to buy to do that?
Um, yes, uh, we we've dealt with, like I said, we've dealt with this with many manufacturers. Uh, we 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 can get uh. I I think Doria is committing to uh providing dimmable fixtures. Uh, with timers or, you know, adjustable programming. Um, and I think the the field conditions is is definitely the way to go, rather than seeing. Numbers on a plan because none of us are lighting consultants, none of us are lighting experts. I think the real world conditions will dictate. Um, A, safe levels and B, adequate lighting levels for the neighbors and the uh and the property itself.
Yeah, and I think what Chip is suggesting is we go out there and once it's set up before you open and we we do it, right, Chip?
I think that's absolutely the correct way to do it.
Yep.
And we're, and we support that. We in Noria support that. We have absolutely no problem.
You don't wanna have that what happened at the light department, right, Chip? Okay. Any other?
But at the same point, you know, Noria has to have. An understanding of. What's the lowest level they can go to to be safe when we do this?
Yeah, yep, and we we. You know, Chris mentioned, you know, we're not, we're not lighting consultants, but you know, the the truth is, you know, we do work heavily with industry. Uh, with industry leaders and uh and consultants that that do this across the country and and like Chris said for. You know, for other uh brands and competitors here uh locally. So. Uh, I think there's plenty of of brain power to uh to solve it, uh, and we'll make sure that we're aware. Um, you know, and knowledgeable at that time and then and then whoever the folks that are there. Uh, present when we, when we do that exercise uh onsite, you know, we can uh, we can agree uh on. On what's, on what's reasonable and safe and all of that uh with with that backdrop.
Okay, the other thing I would suggest is, and I. Others can chime in, but you might. Help with kind of what we're concerned about, which is the glow. To look at the Calvin levels and have a warmer light. Rather than a blue LED light. Or a white light, right? Have more of a yell, have a higher Calvin level. Just think about.
A lower Calvin level.
A lower, excuse me, I get it wrong every time. To to keep it warmer as compared to that bright crystal blue LED light level.
The temperature, correct?
Temperature, yeah.
Twenty-seven to thirty-two.
You might be able to have it brighter, might be able to have it lighter, but not brighter, if I'm making any sense.
We can finish the signage pretty quick if we can get back to it.
Please.
All right, so the beef, the B sign basically is the one that's over the doorway in the front of the the building. Which um is supposed to be no, no greater than three foot. Uh, by code, they propose five foot six. I'd say, given. Given what they've shown and and the size of it, overall, the volume of it, basically, I'd say it's fine. I I would. Personally vote for the change in height. Um, and I do have all the sections, but we don't have to go through them now as to what they'd have to ask for. I can pass them on to. To uh Brian. So that. If if anybody else has got any problem with the five foot six. Um, I think you should speak up, but I I'm fine with it.
Oh, my, it's a big facade.
So the other things I don't see here, Jim, I don't see handicap parking signs on posts.
Um, I think they're on the pavement, aren't they?
Uh, they gotta be on a post to be legal.
Yeah, no, you're right.
So I don't see those here. I don't see exits and en- entrance signs.
Yeah, those are on the.
Any of the directional signage.
Chris, can you address that?
They might be on the civil.
Yeah, they're on the.
They're they're on, they're on the civil. We have uh one ADA parking space, which is located uh left of the uh the front entrance. Um, as uh you can see on this schematic, we have all the bollards that are that are there for safety barriers. And the ADA sign is affixed to uh one of the bollards that is directly in front of the uh ADA parking sign. Yeah, it's all ADA uh ADA required. Um, and then I'll see we have.
Those bollards are five feet tall?
The uh, so the sign is basically, um, the bollard is a certain height, and then the metal rod sticks up um out on uh above the uh the baller.
There you go, so it's not really attached to the bollard. It's affixed to a metal pipe that's affixed to the bollard.
Yes, the the ball, the the metal pipe is is typically inside the baller itself, and that sticks outside a- above the height of the. Um, uh, the the, to the correct height for the ADA sign.
All right, that makes more sense.
Yeah, and obviously, there are there are stop signs at the at the uh at the driveways. Uh, there's pavement arrows and and, you know, this is just the architect's rendering. To show more the architecture of the building.
Yeah, those reflected on Chris's site civil plan.
Are the exit entrances lit?
They the exit, the entrance signs, no, they're they're just stop signs at the um. Um, at the at the end, at the exit signs. There's no um, you know. See you soon or or welcome signs um at the uh driveways.
And they're on the civil drawing?
There, everything's on the civil. Yeah, I can, I can share my screen.
It's all covered.
And you've gone through all those, Jim?
Yep.
But for consistency, since it's made made other people move it, did I see a picture of your phone number on the door earlier too?
We haven't got to that yet.
Okay. I'll let Jim take care of it.
As long as we're off lighting. People complain about me talking too much. Wow. I think I'm having a an effect.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, the next sign we haven't covered at CMD, which are the occupancy signs for the tenant, whoever is gonna be the tenant. Um, and they are appropriately sized, appropriately located. Alls we need to do is see them, see those signs when they come back, including the ones that are gonna go on the post, on the uh freestanding.
Jim, my question would be, why wouldn't they go above the canopy as compared to below?
Why is what?
Why wouldn't they go above the campaign like the Noria sign as compared to below?
They've got them on the corner. They got them on the two corners.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I think having Noriega as the predominant. Appropriate.
I don't know they appreciate that.
And and they may come back and ask them to be somewhere higher. At this point, this is what they're asking for, and I would say, and I'll tell you right now, they can have them on both corners. And they can have them at that size. They come back with it and ask for something different, we'll deal with it.
I think Chip was asking about the, you were talking about the other ones, right, Chip?
No, those, whether they go above the, uh, you know, if you, if you consider that the Nor- Noria sign. Is above the canopy, why wouldn't these be above the canopy?
Uh, I was thinking, I thought you meant the ones on the street, because it's below.
I've seen. I've seen this entry at an Irving's station up in Freiburg, Maine. I don't know what Noria is doing with Irving and as the gas pump, but hey, this is, it doesn't look bad.
Okay, the door.
All right, the um, the next one is the door, and actually, the door regulation basically is five percent. For exit doors, and if you wanna consider it's an entrance or exit, but. Under residential exit doors, which is also covered on the commercial. Or business, basically, it's five percent, but. We normally would consider it ten percent, but the regulations here say five.
Yeah, I don't think that's on a door, though. I think it's on the side panel, Jim.
Uh, no, it's clearly says exit door.
Oh, the exit, okay.
Yeah, but this is, this is both an access and an entry.
Got it.
But it doesn't matter. I mean, we we can say what we want here.
I think that's as much a safety issue as anything.
Yeah, I'm fine. That's what's presented.
So that's all, that's all the signage covered, including the lighting.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, Brian, anything else to present today? We're going to go through the conditions. Okay. Are they showing yet?
Yep.
Okay, so I I'm gonna, uh, I'm not gonna read everyone verbatim cuz you're so familiar with most of these, but uh the the board, the first one is that. We have to comply with the conditions, board retaining jurisdiction for minor modifications. Um, two, we have to provide uh information to the police, fire and zoning enforcement. Three, have to build according to the plans. Four is the uh Jim McBane review of the building permit plans to make sure they match. If there's a five, if there's a conflict between the decision and the plans, the plans control. Um. This is the parking, uh, no offsite, no parking uh during construction on side streets uh that would take up school spaces, etc. So it has to all be on the lot. Seven is the uh traffic advisory contribution. If you re- recall that they're gonna donate twenty-five thousand dollars to significantly. Upgrade the traffic lights at the intersection of Lowell and Vernon Street. And that was reviewed with town engineer? That's right. Yeah, this is his condition. Eight is another town engineer condition where um. We're not gonna have, we met with the light department in with Bill Renault, town engineer. We're gonna get our power from a. Hole on the opposite side of Lowell Street, and we're gonna go underground with our with our electricity instead of having a. A wire going all the way across in front of the school and to our building. Um, since uh we're gonna cut into the street, we're gonna quit contribute five thousand dollars for. The town to do curb-to-curb milling and overlaying in that area, so to really fix the road correctly when we uh, when we're done. Um, number nine is the uh as-built plans that we have to provide. That's a town engineer thing. Number ten, um, this is one that you have typically put in, and I'll let you digest the construction of delivery hours uh to uh during construction. Um, because of the school. Yep. Those hours seem appropriate, yep. That's, that's what you've done near other schools, Mr. Chair, so I just kind of took that away. You did that with the middle school with Ray Lottens project and. Uh, hours of operation, twenty-four hours, as we discussed. Uh, snow storage, so this kind of goes to your your typical thing with with gas and uh. Gas stations that you've done in the past is is not having an own M plan, but just captured in conditions. Um, and the snow storage may occur in the property as long as parking spaces are not lost. Chris has designated snow storage area on the plan. In the event snow storage encroaches upon parking spaces, results in loss of parking and snow should be removed from the property.
So can you, um. Can you show, I didn't focus on this, Brian. Can you show me which plan that is and where these spots are?
Yeah, Chris, can you do that? Chris?
Yeah, I'm trying to. I need to share my screen if you can unshare.
Oh, sorry, I you're on mute. Go ahead.
Um, so on the site plan, uh, which is sheet four of twelve, uh, we're dedicating a snow storage along the side property here. And between the uh underground few store tanks and the uh retaining wall, uh, we do have an additional note on the plan. Proposed storage area has shown access to be trucked offsite.
What does it say? Proposed storage areas what? Proposed storage areas what?
Proposed snow storage areas as shown, excess, any excess snow to be trucked offsite.
Okay, so my concern is with the front parking area. You bring a loader here, you can pile that snow ten feet tall and and eliminate a lot of clearances. Right, and eliminate, eliminate, you know, in that front band, you could have a huge snow pile. And not take away any parking spaces. So I guess I would, I I would include that, you know, no, no snow, you you gotta keep it down below. On a window level on a car. I mean, we can't have it be unsafe.
I I would agree that, you know, snow storage on site, uh, you know, would be problematic if you do have a large snow storage area. Um, the fact that we. We don't really have a substantial green space in the front here, you know, we have about, you know, eight to ten feet from the curb. To this retaining wall, whi- which is what this is, that that.
Yeah.
The decorative retaining wall. Um, I think you'd be hard pressed to get a uh, a substantial snow pile uh, in this area. Uh, we could definitely, you know, add to add to the note indicating that, you know, sightlines won't be, you know, uh, impacted for for the driveways.
That would be great. Just just do that, and that would be fine. That way, if it ever becomes an issue, you just have to come in and take it out.
Will do.
It's safety more than anything else, and I know you guys are concerned about that.
Will do.
Again, whether you want to update the plan, because that note's fairly short, this one um. Specifically talks about parking spaces being lost, it could say, or sightlines affected, or something like that. I could deal with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
In the conditions, fine.
Yeah.
Brian, if you could also go back. Um, and just, one of the things we tend to do is lose continuity. Um, with who's managing the site and all that, and I know Noria is gonna own it, but I'm sure they're gonna have different managers. Could we also put in where where they have to notify the. Uh, where they have to give notification to police and all, but also if there's ever a change in manager. That they have to update that information. That way, the the. People know who to contact or who they're asking for.
Could be an addition item too, Brian, just an update, update is needed as management changes or personnel change, something, yeah, yeah. Because it's already mentioned in condition two, yeah.
Right, no, that's, it was to go back to condition two, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Chris, catch the screen back?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, I made a note, Mr. Chair, we can buff that up, but.
Good.
And I also made a note on. The sightlines, we'll we'll buff that up too, but just as a as a placeholder.
Yep, okay.
Can I go on, Chip?
Yeah.
Okay, landscaping, landscaping features of property, including all ones, areas, trees, shrubs, farming plants, planting, mulch beds and walkways. Be managed and maintained through a combination of ongoing and seasonal inspection as well as. Task specific scope, uh, task specific or scope specific management and maintenance. Landscaping features shall be maintained. In good condition at all times, and any dead landscaping features or landscaping features in disrepair. Shall we be replaced or repaired on a regular basis per manufacturer specifications and requirements.
So Brian, with this one, we had talked about seasonal plantings, right? Color, um, and I'll give you an example, Prime does a great job. Cumberland Farms was supposed to do a good job, they don't do a good job at all. Um, so to me, you know, this ongoing and seasonal inspection. As well as task specific or scope specific management and maintenance. Relates to that annual planting, you know, whether it be impatience, annuals, mums, seasonal color. Um, how how do we make sure that happens?
Tony or uh, Pat?
We talked about that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we're happy, we're we're happy to do that, but I I can't speak to how you guys make sure that it happens. I mean, we we can tell you that we're gonna do it, so I I. If you're, if you need language on how to write that, I'll defer to to you guys and Brian, but yeah, we're we're happy to accommodate that type of.
I think it's written here. It just. You know, whether it's two or three times a year or whatever, that. However, you wanna.
Landscape plan? The types of plants that are gonna be in that area and.
Well, it doesn't need to be typed, because given whoever their landscaper is, might wanna be creative and change it up or.
Having annuals, not species necessarily, but having annuals.
Seasonal annual color.
Yeah.
In the beds that are appropriate. Thank you.
Great. We'll buff that up. Um, this talks about uh, weather, if it can't be completed, that the board could take a bond. Lighting hours, I think we discussed, so. You know, I'm just gonna make a note that we need to, we'll 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 fix that, that we discussed as far as onsite, um, to make sure that we're all in sync on that. Post-construction.
Um. So you just made basically a condition that will approve it before.
Yeah.
CL, yeah.
Yeah, you can see the language, Greg, I'm just gonna put it as a placeholder, and I'm happy to share it with Dave.
If Dave's good with it, I will be, so we're on the same page. I don't need to see it.
Yep, I'm just not gonna try to wordsmith it now.
Yep.
Okay. Um. So yeah, the board is, you know, the signs are gonna be modified, so we will modify the sign plan that that will um, go in. Uh, to uh, you know, to basically um, align with what was discussed and agreed upon tonight. Uh, and then this is very clear that any changes to those signs in size, material, color, location, shape. Verbiage has to come back to the board, that's a standard condition that you always have. Um, no other signage shall be allowed, and the premise is not shown on the plans. Um, and this shall include that the signage for the yet-to-be-determined tenant that must be reviewed and approved by the board. So you retain jurisdiction on that. Uh, and then then we, you talked about the diesel sale, that diesel sales allow, but there's a further condition on that. Furthermore, while the sale of diesel fuel is allowed on the property. There shall be no signage off the property advertising or promoting the sale of diesel fuel. On the property, including but not limited to on Route one twenty-eight, AKA Route I ninety-five. So that's just, there's no offsite advertising for diesel being sold on the property period. But we're highlighting the highways, because that was initially the main concern. Um, and then the the final one was an INI fund, uh, request of the Department of Public Works, a contribution of sixteen hundred twelve dollars. Okay.
Yeah, Brian, the only thing I don't see, and I think it was referred to when Pat talked about the sound levels. Is that you guys agreed to to have, uh, you know, we did the pre. Pre-existing sound, and then you said what your equipment would be leveled to, so I think we need in here a post. Construction sound evaluation.
Confirmation.
Make sure, confirmation.
Yeah.
And if and if they don't meet the standards you said they were going to. And where where were those standards listed? Are those on the di- on the plans?
No, those were part of the sound study that have been submitted.
Okay, so it's in the file?
Yeah, yeah.
And that that's good enough to be there as.
Yeah.
What it needs to be, okay.
Yeah, and just a placeholder.
Yep, no, looks pretty good to me. That's it for my notes.
Okay, any other board members, any other comments, questions on the proposed conditions?
No.
Yeah, I'm just checking through my notes, and I just came across the one that said condition, another study after it's built on the noise. And TAC contribution for signal improvements, we got that, okay. Those are just a couple of notes that I had on conditions from previous meetings. I think we got them covered, okay?
The acoustic study was um, from uh, by a Centec on August tenth, twenty-two.
Okay.
Was submitted at our eight twelve meeting, I guess. Eight seventeen, sorry.
And if you remember at that meeting, Jim, there was some supplemental information that was presented to.
Yeah. Um, the only further comment I have to the plans is we had samples down at the building department to show. And I don't know that everybody's seen them or not, but I did, and I took photographs of them. Um, is I'd like to get those like we do normally on the drawings, so each one of the samples and the product, basically. Um, in color on the plans, so we have some record of where everything is and what it is. That includes the fence. I don't know that we have, we had some discussion about fence, but I don't know we've had any more than that.
Well, I think that that type of fence is already on the plan for sure.
Yeah, but I mean, like, the cuts of the of the products like we do with other projects, basically, where there's an end sheet. Um, after the, at the end of the architecture that show uh, materials, colors, and materials that we're using. Just to and keyed into the elevations at the same time. Because the samples are gonna get lost.
John, John, is that something you're gonna add on to your plan?
Yes, we can add that in, Brian. We'll be making the changes to the sign plans as well, so we can add that at the same time.
So so, uh, Mr. Chair, this get back, this gets back to your final plan, so when we submitted, we submitted a kind of a complete set. The set included site civil at the beginning, and and then it included. At the end, it it, the index reference references all of the uh, architectural plans. Um, the site civil, the last version is August ten, um, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, that hasn't changed, that was submitted a a little while ago, and so that is still consistent in its current. Um, the architectural plans are pretty consistent, except for what we submitted recently, which was the updated sign plan. So um, so we would need to, you know, what I would suggest is is that we would. If the board moves forward, we will, you know, as part of this, submit a a final set of plans. Um, that could be done after your vote, that would have a final revision date, it would have the site civil and the um. The architecture uh, plans with all the information that Jim just requested and the updated sign plan. So they would all be within one set with a final revision date of tonight's date.
Okay. And Gail, please, Gail, please refresh your memory what size we need, because everything we've got so far are PDF form, are these eight and a half by elevens, but I assume we want something bigger. For the building department?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay.
Yeah, wait.
So when we get them.
Yeah, full size, Chris.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And I did find them, Brian, from the August meeting. Just. Files getting thick. Okay. Anything else, board members, before I open up to the public? Okay, we'll open up the public testimony at this time. If anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Not seeing any hands raised, so I will close it to public testimony, perhaps for the last time. So, um.
Mr. Chairman, I ask, are we ready to make a motion, or would you like to? Put a bow around all the open items and be prepared next, next meeting?
Let's see, we're getting a final set of plans that I think is gonna clean up. The sign discussions, right? The open items. We're gonna cover the canopy lighting, I'm just saying, between the conditions and the updated plans. Does that tie everything up, and we just note that, you know, plans as noted or to be updated?
Well, I mean, we certainly, when you guys do the, write it up, you can check to make sure we got everything they said they're providing.
Right, I'm just not seeing a compelling, like, outstanding item that we would really need another meeting for them to come back to. I think, I think everything. Unless somebody can chime in, I I'm looking at the list that I captured. It's it's updating plans and conditions.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to know what direction you wanted to go.
I I think in my mind, I'm ready to proceed. Um, I just want to make it clear for the record who the voting members are. Uh, before we go there.
Brian, did we ever ask you to put together a list of the findings and requirements you're looking for?
Yeah, I sent that to the chair.
Yeah, I think you CC'd you chip, just check your email.
I'm working.
Okay. So for the record, Brian, um, I think we've got regular voting members. Myself, Jim, Chip, Joe, and Tom. Yeah, Amy had missed a few, and she is no longer with us, so, yep, those are the five voting members, Dave, Jim, Chip, Joe, and Tom.
How how do you wanna handle the modified sections for the signage, because I do have them listed, but I can pass them on to to Brian?
Jim, I think you're gonna, you're gonna have to uh, just read them into the record for the vote when it gets to the sign variance.
Okay.
And then and then we can, then we can, then you can pass them along, and I can work with Dave to get them in, but just to at least reference them. Um. Oh, so that would be potentially right, because we're gonna do. Um, a finding. Vote, a special permit, vote. For the use of fast food in conjunction. And the parking.
Yeah, not, and not a relief for parking spaces, just to some of the buffers, etc.
Right, right, the buffer, yes, yes.
And the distance between the driveways and.
Yes, yeah, yeah, thirty-six C, yeah, yeah. And then the fourth is the variance on sides.
Correct.
So, and again, some of that relief has now come off the table because of the agreements we discussed, so.
That's right.
It's it's the specific aspects, Jim, assuming you have it in your notes, that they would still need to relieve, um, need relief from, and we'll get to that in that. Potentially fourth vote, okay?
All right.
You ready, Chip?
I think so.
Awesome.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for a finding on our Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty via B. Of the zoning bylaw, as it relates to the proposed changes, extensions, or alterations. Of the legal non-conforming buildings, structures, or for the gasoline station use. That will now operate in conjunction with a retail store and fast food as shown on Plan One. And I move that the board finds under Article nine, section one ninety fifty B of the bylaw. That said, proposed changes, extensions, and or alterations are not substantially more detrimental. Than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. And with that said, also, all the conditions listed that we just went through. Will be part of the conditions of this finding.
Okay.
Thank you, motion.
That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, voting members have stated, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that is unanimous.
I make a motion for a special permit and site plan approval under Article nine, section one ninety dash twenty-three. And Article eight, section one ninety dash forty-five of the zoning bylaw. To allow a fast food use in conjunction with the gasoline station and retail store.
Just a point of order on that, uh, Mr. Todd Bell, it's Article four, not Article nine, section one ninety twenty-three. You had said Article nine, you you had said Article nine, section one ninety twenty-three, it's actually Article four, section one.
Okay.
That's all, just to, just for the record.
Okay. And then we find the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations, as requiring a special permit in this district. The requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience or welfare as a gas station. The property will also be significantly improved as it currently sits. The requested use will not create or add undue traffic congestion. The TAC has reviewed and commented and has no issues with the diesel fuel sales or the traffic. Further, the applicant is making a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution. Further, the applicant is making a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution. To improve the traffic lights at the intersection of Lowell and Vernon Street. The register, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewage system. Or any other municipal system for such an extent. That the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area. Or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, and the general welfare. D P W has commented and the applicant has met and satisfied the D P W's requests. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining district. As this is already a gas station currently. And it will not be detrimental to the public health, convenience, or welfare. And significant landscaping improvements will be made as discussed. The request use will not by its addition to a neighborhood cause an excess of this particular use. That could be detrimental to the character of the said neighborhood. Under one section, one ninety dash forty-five, the Wakefield zoning bylaws. The board has also reviewed this section of the bylaw, which is pertinent part states that. In reviewing a site plan. The Special Permit Granting Authority and the other applicable agencies. Shall consider, um, among other things, the following, one. Which we have considered. One, the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement. Within the site in relation to adjacent streets, properties, or improvements. Um, thus, we went to T A C as commented before. Adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewer to refuse and other waste. And the methods of surface and stormwater drainage. And possess provision for off-street loading and unloading. Of vehicles incidental to the servicing of the buildings and related uses of lot or tract. We've considered all of the above criteria and is satisfied. And the conditions as stated below will go with this motion as well.
All right, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, same voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that too is unanimous.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move. That we grant a special permit under Article seven, section one ninety dash thirty-six C. Of the Wakefield zoning bylaw for the reductions and the requirements. And standards for off-street parking and loading under Article seven of the bylaw, including. One, section one ninety dash thirty-seven E one of the bylaw. Allowing the open parking areas to be separated from the street line. By a landscaped strip less than fifteen feet as shown on the final site plan. Two, section one ninety dash thirty-seven I. Of the bylaw, allowing the width of the driveway service and parking facilities. To be as shown on the plans and allowing the driveway service. Serving parking facilities to be spaced closer than a hundred feet to one another. And three, allowing other reductions from requirements and/or standards for off-street parking and loading. Under Article seven of the bylaw, necessary to allow construction of the project is shown on the plan. The board finds that the applicant of the standards for off-street parking and loading under Article seven proves to be infeasible. And the reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility due to a lack of su- suitable land. Design considerations and other similar factors. The granting of such special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character. Or welfare of the neighborhood or district or of the town. Furthermore, the board determined that the spaces at the fuel dispensaries. Qualify as parking spaces under the bylaw. And that the location of the structure will not restrict visibility in such a way. As to hinder the safe entry or exit of vehicular traffic from any driveway. To the street or restrict visibility at a corner of two streets. Conditions as previously stated will also go with this finding and motion.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, same voting membership.
So. Joe? Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that too is unanimous.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll start and then turn it over to. To Mr. McBane. I make a motion to grant a variance pursuant to section one ninety dash eighty G. Of the Wa- Wakefield zoning bylaws. To the extent necessary to allow the signs. As depicted on the plan, including but not limited to a variance from the following sections. Is it, would it suffice it to say, as discussed in our meeting this evening? And then you can just put them in, write them into the decision?
Well, he didn't really articulate them. That's why we're gonna defer now to Jim to just call out the sections and where the relief is needed, Jim. So I'd like to do it for the record. So, Jim, if you please.
Yeah, okay. Um, to allow, to allow for, um. The occupancy be on the building, basically, under. I, under Article one oh, one ninety dash seventy-seven E one. To be five foot six as opposed to the required three foot. Uh, height maximum. Um. Let's see, uh, do we, how do we wanna cover the decision, changing the decision on the freestanding? Two thousand sixteen. Basically, shouldn't we update? That?
You can do it either way, Jim. I think you can just include in that, on this, that basically say that, uh, this variant supersedes it. And allows the signs as shown on this site plan, just to keep it concise, so you're not referring back to a, an old variance trying to tie that in.
Okay, all right.
That'll be my suggestion. Otherwise, you, you constantly going back like a two thousand three decision. So you could say you grant relief to these freestanding signs as shown, allowing them, and, and once they're built, they supersede. Uh, any prior decisions in regarding them. What's the relief needed on the freestanding sign? The, um, square footage, right, Jim? So that's what we. Yeah, and to, and to allow them, right, Jim? Because you, you, yeah.
And it's sign, it's sign type A, basically, so someone can look at sign type A for this. So I'm gonna leave that to the end for a moment, just to continue the rest of the new signs.
Okay.
Um. Let's see, then, the next one is, um. To allow for, uh, an occupancy sign, one occupancy sign. On the lower side of the canopy to be. Four feet as opposed to three feet. And to be allowed as an extra occupancy sign on the canopy. Under Article one ninety dash seventy-seven dot E dot one.
Okay, so same paragraph, okay?
Yep. Then the next one is, um. Last area, basically, to allow. Instead of all, instead of. Five percent as required under one ninety dash seventy-seven A. Five. To be five percent be, uh, who allow for ten percent as opposed to five percent of glass coverage. On the entry to the bit, on the entry doors to the building. As outlined on drawing S P oh-one. And then there's the hours of operation to allow for a twenty-four seven. Um, operation as, as required, um, as, uh, other than required as eleven to seven A M. Under one ninety, uh, dash, uh, dot seventy-seven F three. Then finally. To modify and allow for, um, on freestanding signs, two freestanding signs, A, on drawing. To be as outlined. Uh, within drawing S P zero-one. That covers it.
Paragraph, would that speak to multiple freestanding signs? What's the relief there? That there's two of them, uh.
Overall.
In the size of them.
Size, the thickness of the sign.
And what paragraph would that speak to?
Um, it doesn't speak to it because it's been overwritten by basically previous decision.
Jim wants to refer back to that decision. We can't, uh, Mr. Chair. Okay, but if the overall sign of the freestanding, the size of the freestanding sign. Oh, I see, it was forty-three in two thousand sixteen, but was that? A variance from the par- sign paragraph, um, by law at that time?
Yeah, the freestanding side section is one ninety-seven B two C.
I didn't, I didn't go back and look and compare this with the bylaws of the time. I just took the decision basically, because they're pretty much in the same pocket, except for the thickness. And the overall square footage of the sign.
So what, 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 one ninety-seven B two C says, freestanding signs are allowed in a business and industrial district. Each lot may have one sign. Thirty square feet in area, no more than six feet in height, and it goes on. So we, we're getting a variance from that to allow two. And to allow the size and location as shown on the site plan. That sound right, Jim?
That's fine.
B two C, okay.
I got it.
Okay, so.
And all the, and, and then to continue that all the conditions as previously stated will go along with this motion as well.
Okay. But we covered the relief, right, Jim? In your mind, we see occupancy.
Yeah.
Additional occupancy, okay, got it. Brian, you think we got it from your perspective?
I do, and we'll buff it up.
Okay, but just in terms, we've got the relief noted, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so that's.
And then, and then as a belt and suspenders, as you always do, with any other relief under the, under the bylaw, to allow the signs as shown on the plans.
Updated, updated.
Updated plans, that's right.
Right. Okay, so that's.
Yep.
That being the.
So you know, you just reference the plans and the bylaw that will, you know, any relief needed to allow the signs as shown on the plans. The updated plans.
Okay, noted.
All right, I'll second that mo- motion.
Okay, any discussion on that? Rather lengthy motion. All right, same voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that too is unanimous, okay? With that, all of the requested relief for the applications have been approved. Um, we'll, uh, work offline, Brian, to tidy up the plans and, um, of course, the decisions from there. Um. But thank you, everyone, for your time. Um, working on this project, and we look forward to a successful one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, everyone has been involved. Really appreciate your time. Have a great night.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
So, Gail, I didn't get anything final, because we're gonna wait for the final. I just have the new one we got tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Deep breath, exhale, okay. Next continued hearing. Twenty-three dash five, six, seven, and eight, one ninety-eight Albion Street Real Estate LLC, at one ninety-eight Albion Street.
Okay, uh, for the record, Attorney Brian Graham was the chair representing the applicant, um, on this. Um, one ninety-eight Albion Street, um. Uh, Real Estate L, uh, LLC, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna go into efficiency mode here, as I'm sure the board might appreciate, and try to make up some time. Um, um, Giancarlo Tiberia is here, uh, John Olgrin is here. Uh, is, um, as well is, uh, Phoenix Architect Steve DeFuria, uh, from Phoenix. Um, again, to be efficient, uh, John doesn't have anything new to present. He's still working on, looking at the parking as the board have requested. Um, we're gonna be at the Traffic Advisory Committee, Lieutenant Anderson is back. We have a meeting date of October twenty-one. On this matter before the T A C. Um, since the last meeting, if you might recall, there was an open issue. Um, as far as materials go, go, we talked about, um, doing, uh, a portion of the building, uh, in either brick. Or, um, or thin brick, um, and then doing other portions of the building, building in E F S material, trying to match, and we were gonna get samples. Um, my client Giancarlo, uh, mentioned that this is an investment for him. Um, we talked after the meeting and he, you know, he wants to do a good project. He, he, he wants to do other business in town. We talked, uh, about it. He contacted me after that meeting and he said, I don't think the board's really comfortable with the two different materials. And I said, I think you're right. Uh, I don't think they're gonna be at the end of the day. They wanna, they wanna really nice building in a, in an important area. And he said, I agree, so I'm just gonna do all brick, uh, whether it's gonna be the, you know, the, the half brick or the full brick, uh, but it's gonna be all brick. We're not gonna try to match E F S on one side or two sides. Um, so that is now off the table. Um. We, we heard, uh, your comments on lighting, etc., and that's really all we want to accomplish tonight, is kind of just give you. Some updates from Steve and then see if he's, uh, getting closer to the, to the bullseye. On your desires on the architectural lighting and, and other features on the building. So with that said, Steve, can you take the screen?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. For the record, Steve DeFuria, representing Phoenix Architects. And I'll pull the packet up. I'll, I'll keep it brief, um, kinda go over the changes from the last meeting. In terms of floor plan, everything from the last meeting stayed the same. Unit count's still the same, square footage is still the same. Um, the roof plan on the top of the roof deck's still intact. Um, a big discussion for us in the last couple of meetings has been about lighting on the building. Um, the previous design that we had, we had, um, lantern light fixtures that were anchored on the columns. Of the first floor of the retail and the entrance to the building, and then having fixtures mounted across, um, the second floor that wrapped around the side. I know there was some feedback about too much lighting on the building, um, and then the fixture itself, so. Doing a little bit more research, um, and actually looking at Grayson Lofts down the street. Um, you know, there's some typology that fits with this style of building with the goose neck pendants. I know it's been a recommendation from the board as well. Um, so switching that fixture to a goose neck that actually mounts on the banding that separates the retail on the first floor. And the residential on the upper floors. And removing all the fixtures that's mounted on the brick on the second floor. Um, so I think we went from twenty-two fixtures in the last iteration, now we're down to eleven. Um, and the way that they're set up, and I'll scroll through the other elevations as well, is, is where the columns start to break the cadence. Um, we'll call them the bays. Um, that's where the lighting's actually anchored at those, those center points. So you can see it across the front of the building that wraps around the side. Um, and then you can see on the side elevation, it just starts to correspond with, um, some alignments and some windows on the first floor that start to carry up. Um, it doesn't wrap around the back of the building and, in some spots along the side. Um, just so there's not too much lighting across the entirety of the building. Um, again, you can see on the rear, we don't carry that goose neck pendant around. Um, the parking level we just pictured could be motion censored, um, canned lighting, just keep it simple underneath there. And then the other elevation, you can see just wrapping, just covering these two bands. Um, what we started to look at a little bit, you know, I know we've had this, some discussion with the trim that separates the retail and then the residential floors. Um, so just starting to take a deeper dive into how those details start to correspond. Um, so you can see, we started to outline the, the banding between the first and second floor. The parapet wall up in the roof deck, um, and then the detail where the staircase comes up and is your accessibility to that roof deck from the lower floors. That's how all that detail starts to come together. Um, and then in terms of the rendering, again, just updating what we had before. Again, you can start to see the goose neck start to sit in that banding now, carrying the center lines. Um, and then actually starting to look at the building at night, um, again, you can see that the building really starts to sit back. The first floor becomes the priority of the lighting, um, the only lighting that you'll see on the residential floors is just from, um, light from the units. Highlighting the signage all the way around on the first floor, um, and then the reason why it starts to wrap around the sides of the building is just for safety. Um, since we are so close to the sidewalks and then the walkways that surround the parking. Um, just giving some of that safety light for people coming in and other buildings. And then again, as Brian had mentioned, um, I know we were looking at a Stokor E F S product on some of the non-dominant elevations. Um, that product is now removed. We have a Watson Town pin cut brick that's gonna be on all the, all the elevations, um, and an updated goose neck pendant that'll be on the banding around. And then just adding a page where we start to actually call out where the materials are. Um, so you can see the, the iron gray hardy product on the first floor. Brick on the upper floors, um, and then just starting to correspond the materials page with where they're located.
Steve, it, it, I think it's overkill on the lighting. I could see it along the front and maybe even turn on the retail on the side street. But I'm not sure from the entrance to the right and around the corner. It's just seems like a little much, which leads me to a question. What do we got for lighting in the parking lot, if any?
Um, so we haven't gotten there yet. I think it'll be a discussion with John on, um, parking. So we haven't gotten there yet, I think it'll be a discussion with John on parking lighting. And then we'll, we'll have to just figure out a canned lighting fixture underneath the covered parking area. So no discussion yet, but we'll, we'll make a note just to have a discussion about that.
It'd be nice to have some character lighting, basically maybe in the parking lot that's, that's more appropriate to this building than just parking lot lighting. I just put my ten cents in there to start with.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know Pima has, they actually have a product. That kind of corresponds with the aesthetic of the goose neck. But we'll, we'll take a look into that, and I do hear when we started to draw it on the, the elevations. You know, we, we went back and forth on whether the, it was overkill. I think it just has to come down to center lines and symmetry, when you start to take some away, the, the building just started to look lopsided. So that's why we, we carried it throughout and having it wrapped, just to, to make the building not feel one-sided in terms of lighting.
Well, it's, it's sort of a one-sided already because retail in entry is on one side, the other side is just a bunch of windows. Sort of doesn't, it's, it's almost like, you know, that space is just, I guess, storage or something. It's almost like maybe it'd be better off if it was a brick infill panel than having a window at all.
Does that have a unit?
No.
No space or something, didn't they represented it sort of to be determined?
Yeah.
Space or, yeah.
Yeah, so the left, left side's the retail, the right side is private flex space.
Maybe it's a game room, I don't know, it's got a toilet, utility space.
Yeah, that's what.
Certainly seems like it should have windows.
Yeah.
Well, then, then go back to that elevation, I guess, I, I guess I would ask. What happens if there are windows with brick? As opposed to the black panels?
For the front, Steve, the color elevation.
Yeah.
There you go.
I mean, there are many places in town and other places where it's, the brick is, where it's a non-retail, basically it's brick. So would you, you know, would you make that brick? And have a window in it? I'm not, I mean, you should look at it and see whether it does anything to balance, even without the lighting, basically to balance it with the rest, with the upper section of the building. And the retail becomes a, a more active, I mean, it's open, clear, like I, I kind of would like to see what happens if that is. Infilled with brick at that location and just have a window.
Yeah, I mean, maybe Jim, it's, you know, where the front door is perhaps, you know, that banding starts to end and this column actually becomes that cap. Then that brick starts to carry down, we can, we can take a look at that.
No, I, I, I think what, I, I think I just infill around the window, but not change the character of the band running across it. But, you know, you can look at it both ways and see what, what happens, I still wanna see the band running through, maybe not, maybe not the. The signage. Element, basically, band, but. I, I just, that end, I think I'd wanna see just a different character on it, I think, than a black panel.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely take a look at that.
I would just respectfully disagree with our resident architect, I love the fact that the lights wrap the whole entire building and light the entire sidewalk. So just because Mr. McBane says not to do it, you don't necessarily have to follow through.
That's why there's more than one board member, right?
Steve goes, this is gonna be a great one.
With all of these, again, which, and you've heard it on the previous project, you were trying to balance. How much light is needed because of the use, because of safety with having too much, you know, if there's parking lot lights. Casting light, you know, around and then, you know. I understand Jim's point, it's just striking that balance, right?
Yeah.
But if they're done right in the right color, temperature and they're, you know, bright enough to be safe and provide some, some walkability. But not, you know, casting this big glow around the whole building, right? And they're Doc Sky compliant, all that good stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm with that.
I wouldn't even.
You know, maybe.
I'm sorry Greg.
I was just saying, I'm, I'm with Chip, so if those ones on the side could, I mean, it's a small parking lot, provide most of the light for the parking lot, then I would. You know, I, I try to skip putting a big light in the parking lot, I, I think it, it works well on the building.
Well, there's a pole there, right, I think what we haven't figured out is whether there's gonna be a light on that pole or just power, drawing power from it or. I don't know, I don't know if we've heard that yet, but.
The pole that shows the elevation? Now that, is that, is that?
It's actually, it's actually further back, it's more just resembling the, the streetscape, it, it's way further down on the, the street. So.
It's on the right there, like in the, the entrance side of the parking lot. If they could do, if a light could do, could do two, two tasks rather than just a light in the parking lot and leave it.
But there's parking in the rear, right? And there's a pole back there, utility pole, right? Can I have the screen for a second?
Some parking.
Yeah.
Parking on the side, parking in the rear. The good part of this project is, is, you know, this is, this is Albion Street, so this, this, the building. We don't have, we have no, no wires in front of our building. That's terrible, sorry about that. Because that pole. Come on. That pole is, is kind of at the corner of our building, but the wires go across the street. Has no light on it. I don't know if it's utility pole back there, that's, is that the pole you're talking about back here Dave?
Yeah, I thought it was on the corner of the site, I thought that was mentioned by John early on, but.
John, can you shed some light on that, is that the pole back here?
Yeah.
Yeah, shed the light.
Yeah, no pun intended, I think it's just a, a utility pole, it takes wires back to the project out back.
Yeah, the, the, there's wires that come across down the lot line. Just before the, the back portion where the parking lot is, and then the wires continue on off, off site. And that's the pole that we were planning to wire the, the building with.
Okay, I just, I couldn't remember if there was actually light on it as well as utility lines, but.
But the great thing.
Figure out parking lot lighting, right?
Yeah, but the great thing of this project is it's finally a project that doesn't, you know, with no wires either side.
That's gonna make a huge difference on the look of this building. And Steve, that's the pole here that you had in your rendering, just kind of showing off site, right?
Yeah, there's, there's one on one side and I, I think there's one way further down on the right side as well.
Yeah. Okay. We, we do wanna keep the freestanding sign, that's grandfathered. All right, so you presented the lighting plan, I think. Sound like the majority were fine with the goose necks wrapping the corners, especially if they can be used for some of the parking lot lighting. But you're gonna come back to confirm the fullness of parking lot lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, okay. And maybe look at brick around that, those flex space windows just to see how it looks or, but otherwise as presented. Was there anything else you wanted to show tonight, Brian?
No.
Okay.
When are you going to TAC, Brian?
Ten twenty-one, Chip.
That's after our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I really feel like we're.
Yeah, I think we should skip.
We're ready to put a bow on this thing, I mean, they came in in great position.
Yeah.
We're just looking for things to talk about at this point.
I, I think we should just wait till we get done with TAC in the twenty-first and come back the next meeting, I think we're just wasting my client's time and money to come back at the next meeting. We're not gonna have a lot to cover until we're done with TAC.
That would be the twenty-sixth, yeah, okay. Seems reasonable.
And then if you find it appropriate, Mr. Chair, I'd ask Mr. McGrath to refresh our memories on what findings and things he's looking for.
Yeah. Could I start doing some drafts on conditions, etc.?
I was just gonna say, and draft conditions, yeah, I was gonna.
Yeah.
Piggyback on what Chip had suggested, yes, please.
And you're gonna keep the O and M as part of the conditions, are you gonna do?
No, this will have its own separate O and M, is, is consistent with projects of this nature.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so at the next meeting, we'll, we'll discuss traffic findings, draft conditions, O and M. Sound good? Yeah, and any comebacks from tonight, just if you've looked at some options on that first floor there. And, and parking lot lighting, right? Okay. Sounds good. Anything else board members before I open it up?
Just to, to Greg's point about lighting, using that lighting, there is on that side, I don't know that it would do much. For parking lot, but there is alongside the building proposed a sidewalk going to the back of the lot. So it would provide lighting along that walkway. It's in the civil drawing.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll open up the public testimony, if anyone has a comment or question about the information we've heard tonight. Please raise your hand and I will call on you at this time. Seeing no hands, I'll close with public testimony.
I move that we. Continue this hearing to October twenty-sixth.
Just before you do, I, I, I wanted to, on a housekeeping thing, you need an extension also. Because right now we're extended through October thirty-one. So that gets. Yeah, so, you know, just to, just to make, I just want to extend the time, after extend the time to the end of the year, I just don't wanna keep going through this, hopefully we're done well before that, but. I just. So I would, I would.
Point, well, there's only two meetings after, after October, there's only two meetings, right, one in November.
Yeah, so I think it's just easier just to extend it to twelve thirty-one at this point, so we're not doing it every meeting.
Okay, standard time. Twelve thirty-one, okay.
So I'm in my motion to also accept the offer to extend this to twelve, to twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, any discussion? For Brian, you'll get us a letter on that one.
Yeah, I'll send that to Gail in the morning.
Thank you. All right. Regular voting members and Tom, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, thanks for the info tonight, we'll, we'll talk to you next month.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Next continued hearing. Twenty-three dash twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, One Sylvan LLC at one eighty-four Water Street.
Great, for the record attorney Brian McGrath representing the applicant with me tonight. Is Carlton Quinn from Allen and Major. Also Savario is here, Savario, are you here?
Could you?
Great. Full and Chitty, and I think Rob Passioni, our architect is here also, right Savario?
Yep, and then I think also Jackie's here tonight with Carlton, in case we get into the landscape stuff, so she's our fabulous landscape designer.
Great, thank you, so again, for efficiency, we're, we're looking to present some information which requested by the board on architecture and some site civil information that we've been able to obtain. We're also, it was, it was suggested that perhaps, you know, a restaurant type use, as long as we met parking requirements and didn't need, you know, a small type restaurant with minimal seating. So we wanna kind of talk a little bit about that. And to, you know, to kind of answer these questions, as a team, we got together again and put together a PowerPoint presentation just to keep organized. And as you saw from the last meeting, Savario's really good at presenting that, so I'm gonna hand it over to him. Savario, if you could take the screen and get right at it.
Got it. All right, can everybody see me?
Yeah.
All right, so my game plan is just to run through some of the changes that we've made since the last time that we met, just a couple of weeks ago. And then of course I'll hand it over to the guys here and Jackie as well. And you guys can, can ask the more granular questions, so I'm just gonna kind of touch on the high level stuff. So from an architectural standpoint, what we've done is address some of what some of our butters had brought up, which was the interest in, in having some kind of food use here in the neighborhood. So we've revised the renderings, we've added ventilation and all that good stuff, which we'll go through. We've added some notes for our rooftop screening and mechanical, I know Jim had asked about that. Kind of mirroring what we did at ninety-seven and ninety-nine, adding some additional long window sections. And then the conversation about signage came up, so we've addressed signage as well. So I'll start with what I think is probably the, the most complicated item, I would suppose. So this is the way we kind of interpreted the food use, but we're, we're kind of imagining here and what it sounded like is the neighborhood is interested in seeing some kind of food tenant in the space. And so in thinking about that, we went back to the regulations and said, okay, well, what can we really do and, and how can we do it within the, the parameters of the limitations of the parking that we had? So as I understood it, you know, the computation is if we result in four spaces or fewer, then we don't need parking. So the way we're imagining it is a cafe, no more than three employees on a peak shift. And, you know, no more than twelve seats. And so what I'm showing here in the, in the slide. Is just the side profile of the building, and of course the renderings and all that stuff have been updated in the plan sets. But you can see the ventilation popping out through the, the roof there, and then you'll see that we've added ventilation in the space itself. In terms of the signage, so we've landed on a particularly creative name for the building, the Parkside, of course, because we're right next to the Zella Park. And so what we, what we're doing is we're proposing that we add the signage to the canopy itself. So the Parkside building branding will be attached to the top side of the canopy, whereas the address will be at the face. What we're, what we're proposing is basically stainless steel lettering, brush face lettering, all dark sky compliant. And I'll show you in this next drawing here, so it's LED illuminated front channel. All of this is in the package that Brian sent along, but three thousand Kelvin temp. We're looking at the Parkside lettering being about nine, nine and a half inches, and then the address is about six inches. In terms of the retail signs, so Jim had brought up, you know, maybe addressing the signage situation now, although the tenant will at some point come to you guys looking for their signage, of course. But similar to what we did at ninety-seven and ninety-nine, same idea, we took a slightly different approach because the building here is a little bit more contemporary in design. So what we've got is signage on both sides, as you guys had suggested, both on Melvin and on Water Street. We're using four lights, four downlights, similar kind of a goose neck style, we'll get into that. So we're, what we're proposing is an Alcon lighting model three one oh two five. It's a little bit more of a modern look, it's not a traditional goose neck. You know, similar to what you guys just saw in that previous presentation, of course. It's a spotlight with a twenty-four inch arm, corrosion resistant, cast brass, antique bronze finish. It's an LED clear lens, it's dimmable, I know that we talked about dimmable lighting outside at the last project, so we made sure that this fixture was dimmable as well. It's a three thousand Kelvin temp, four seventy lumens, so that's gonna be on the warmer side rather than, you know, the daylight bright white. And we've chosen a thirty-eight degree flood spread. So just showing you there the picture what it looks like, as well as the mounting canopy. Here's how it basically looks rendered, so that's just a section of the corner itself. So you've got the two signs and what you'd see basically from the opposing corner, as well as the building signage and the address. In terms of the rooftop plan, so we've added some detail in the folder that I included, I actually included some illustrative mechanicals. So, you know, our makeup air units, our heat pump units are in there. Not necessarily the exact units that our engineers are gonna pick, but just enough to give you a little bit of detail on the sizing. So that you understand kind of the, the scale of what the, what the roof plan looks like. What we are showing now though, what you can see in that red arrow is the hood exhaust, so that's it coming up. From the, the restaurant space that we showed in that, that earlier slide. So what's happening there is we're about five to six feet in from that roof edge on Melvin. Basically, if you're standing next to the building, you're not really gonna be able to see it, but we wanted to show you that. From a screening standpoint, what we decided to do is use the same screening system that we used at ninety-seven. So you remember in ninety-seven, ninety-nine, we had some of our, they had some concerns about sound. And so we decided to invest in the sound guard system. In going through it and thinking about it, I found it important to just do it here too, even though we don't have any abiding residential structures. It just made sense to consider maybe the noise pollution, you know, I'd rather the sound of kids playing baseball than the sound of heat pumps up on the roof, right? So this, this particular model, it has a noise reduction coefficient of one point. So this, um, this particular model, it has a noise reduction coefficient of one point one. Basically, to put that in perspective, it's a hundred percent absorption of sound. So what it's really doing is observing all of the echo. Um, the sound transmission class, it's thirty-two decibels. So just to give you some context, a conversation like we're having right now, sixty decibels, a motorcycle is about ninety-five. A whisper's thirty. So effectively, what this is doing is it's taking sound from a conversation to a whisper. Um, it does that with a sponge-like material. Let's say it's a four-inch sound attenuating barrier. Um, you know, ultimately what it's just doing is sitting up there and absorbing sound. We're going to wrap this in a panel. So you'll see in the elevations that it matches the color of the actual building, so you can pretty much put anything on it. In terms of ventilation, again, just for illustrative purposes, just to give you guys an idea of what'll be up there. So, um, you know, the upper unit, I'm just showing two different examples, is about twelve inches tall, eight inches in diameter. The lower unit, that one's just under fifteen and about eleven inches wide. It's going to sit on a platform. Platform's typically going to bring it to under five feet. Uh, this is typically sufficient. This is like a twenty-five hundred CFM, uh, more than sufficient for a typical, you know, cafe use. Uh, so again, it's set back that five to six foot off the roof edge, so barely discernible from the street. Uh, as Jim requested, we made these, uh, adjustments to the pages, uh, eight, three point four and three point five. So you've got a little bit more detail on the, uh, window and wall sections. And then in terms of civil updates, so we've made a bunch of progress in the last couple of weeks. DPW had requested that we do a little bit more investigation on the catch basin that's on Melvin, uh, not on our land, but adjacent to us. And so we actually sent a pump truck out there, pumped it out, and, um, we don't need any further investigations. There's no pipes attached or anything like that. So we did address that. Uh, we wanted to make sure that that process was expedited and then we got ahead of it. Um, we did revise the drainage report. And, uh, we did address that matter. I think we had brought up, uh, early on in the last hearing, the lines that are coming across, uh, Water Street. The, as we suspected, it's not an issue. Those are just going to get cut back. So Vinnie over at Wakefield Light confirmed that for me. Um, in terms of the fire department feedback, we've addressed basically anything we can in the plan. We've also added formal responses from, uh, Carlton's team as well, but, uh, in terms of one of the items that they wanted, they wanted to see a hydrant. So I'm going to show you where we ended up placing that. Uh, so we did take care of that. We shifted our EV spaces over a couple of slots, which I'll show you, and, um, we did prepare a sketch for a potential storefront patio area. So here's those EV spaces. Basically, what they did is they moved from this corner here over just a couple of spots. So they're just in the middle, nothing, nothing major. In terms of the hydrant, so we've located it here where you see that red circle, um, so it's on the Melvin side. And in terms of patio seating, what we've done is converted that landscaped area in front of the storefront to a patio seating area. Uh, what we're doing is basically improving the interplay between the street and the space, again, looking to activate that space in front of it, even though it's, you know, it's not a huge space, about three hundred and fifty square feet. But, uh, there is enough space there to fit three comfortable tables. Uh, we're using a Teco Block material on the patio itself. It's from the Linnea line. It's, uh, we've specced at least the chestnut brown color. And then we're proposing a wall along the perimeter there. So it's about eighteen inches high, twelve inches wide. This is how it plays out in the, uh, in the rendering. So this is the southeast elevation. So you see that nice seating out front with the wall. And this is how it looks from the southwest elevation. So again, just that opposite direction there from, uh, where the church is. And that's all I got for you. Brian, I'll hand it back to you.
That's fine. Do you think Savario that, um, I mean, I I don't, I don't, you know, I think, um, and I'll defer to the chair. I don't know if you really need to hear from Site Civil. I mean, i- i- you're going to get a memo back from the DPW if they're satisfied with anything, with everything that they asked for. We're, we've already, uh, we're already pretty much done with them. Um, and I think you will get, will get that memo.
Um, yeah, Carlton checked in with them today and, uh, they hadn't finished their review yet, but, uh, I I believe we've addressed everything. There was nothing really major in there.
We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So in case someone wants to bring me in.
Yeah, I don't think we have to go into too much detail in that regard unless, again, there's comments from the board, but. I think we can wait for that memo from them. Board members, any comments, questions?
Oh, I think this looks great. It covers the issues that that anything that I had. Um, certainly, um, the signage looks fine in my mind and will probably meet the requirements. And we'll deal with the, uh, tenant when the tenant comes along.
This is Greg.
Question about the parking, and this is not to say I have a problem with it, just want to make sure we, we get it right when we actually do the, can you go back to that slide where you had the calculation?
Uh, yep.
It's not to say I don't have a problem with it either, once we actually look at it, but. So, just want to look at your calculations again. So one per three employees and one per four seats. So you are showing. Also seats. Outside, right? Other seats inside, is that included in the count or no seats, seats inside?
No, so so the way we're interpreting it is that outdoor seating would be inclusive that of those twelve seats. So basically summertime, spring, whatever, if somebody wants to have seats out there, they've got to eliminate the dining seat. So it's got to be a max.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's what we envision at least, right?
Yep. And then I don't, I mean, with a space this size, I don't even know if it's a problem, but Brian. If other people don't take it, maybe we don't even need to discuss it, but. Essentially, you're committing to. Three employees or less.
Yeah, that.
Think about, we need to think about whether we. Want to condition it to that, or if that's even that big of a deal. I don't want to ob- obviously, obviously hurt Savario's. Negotiations with possible tenants either, um, with a size this, a a a space this size, maybe we don't care. Uh, but I just want to at least point it out.
No, I. I think it has to be conditioned because it's got to be in compliance.
Well, yeah, it has to, you could either condition it or you have to come back to us somehow.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, I mean, but. So, I mean, and I think in a space this big, if it's, if it's a, if it's a, uh, uh, serving food and beverages, and you know, an eating place, a restaurant. I don't think it's going to be, uh, more than three people working there at once.
Yeah, the thing is, and I get, and I can just speak from personal experience. I've owned a lot of restaurants over the years. I came from a restaurant family. Yet the square footage in the space, I mean, by the time you you take up what you need to take up for re- for actual, um, you know, preparation space. And, you know, ventilation bathrooms and everything else, you you're not going to want to fit more than three people back there, so, uh, it'll start getting tight real fast.
Is this sheet in our package tonight? Sorry, I think just about, I mean, I've got a lot of things up stamped there as being new. Including the lighting spec and the architectural updates.
Yeah, there's a lot of new stuff in that folder. I, um, I tried to organize it by, uh, by discipline, basically, and then I separated out the roof mechanical spec, so there's some cut sheets in there.
But is this particular slide in there?
No, this is the PowerPoint.
No, no. I'll throw this in the, I'll throw this in that folder too, so that you guys have it.
Send this to me in a separate email, Savario, a link, so I can send it to the chair.
You got it.
This PowerPoint, this PowerPoint, yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, most of the sheets I think you showed were probably in this package, but this one I didn't recall. See, okay. But it'll be good to have the full PowerPoint. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so I'm good, Brian. So we need to think about conditioning three employees and if there's seats, twelve seat, or. Yeah, twelve seats or less. I don't care whether they're inside or outside, but.
Yep.
I, the, the other thing I think that, um, I I got to ask is. What are we doing? Do we, is this a old cold service? Or are we going to have some sort of cooking in the, in the, in this potential space?
So what's your?
I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we're far enough down the line to know, you know, what what the intended use might be in in terms of that. Uh, it could be, I mean, you know, I'm. I I don't see why, you know, like an ice cream shop wouldn't be a great fit here, particularly given it's adjacent to the park. Um, but I don't think we're even far enough down the line to even think about it. For now, we just figured factor for the, for the ventilation and the impact on the roof. And, you know, the visible massing, and then we could kind of take it from there. I assume that eating places, serving food or beverages was kind of generic and it didn't matter, but I guess I'll, I'll defer to the board. You guys can tell me.
Well, I I mean, we've had places that have come along. And all of a sudden, we got this huge stainless steel ductwork running up the outside of the building with, you know, a big fan sitting on the top of it, looks like heck. But it was never presented to us in that way. So, you know, it, it here's a brand new building, if if there's any. Um, possibility that there might be some ventilation needs and it should be built in into the building and not all of a sudden. We're looking at a big grill on the outside of the building with grease running down it or something. I mean, you've done a job of this. The last thing. That I'm sure you want is the same thing, but, um, obviously, however you prepare this. And if you have restaurant experience, then at this scale, which is small. You know, what do you think you might have to supply to whomever might come in here?
Yeah, that's why we've tried to get it.
Not just now, but maybe in the future as well.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And that's why we've tried to address it now and locate ventilation and locate where, uh, that's going to come up through the roof and and make sure that it's running straight up. Um, obviously, we've got, we're factoring for for makeup air and all that good stuff too. So, you know, the way I look at it is we certainly, just from an operational standpoint with the property, since. This will be a long-term hole. We, we don't want anything on the outside of the building either. We don't want anything popping out of the wall, out of the sides or running up the sides or anything like that. So. It's important that we factor this now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments, question, board members? Okay. And that's it for your presentation, Brian and Savario?
Yeah, one thing I wanted to point out, you know, we're showing the restaurant, uh, food establishment as one possible use, but we're, we s- we still, we still have. Retail service establishment, because that could happen there too. And we still think even with that, the outdoor patio will be tasteful. You know, residents could sit out there. I mean, it's it's a nice look. Um, so in that regard. Um, this week I filed a new application because, um, I talked to town council in our, our. We filed for a, our mixed-use application was for, uh, multifamily with retail service establishment or a restaurant. Um, a restaurant is a, a by right use in an industrial district, but a, um, retail and service establishment needs a special permit. I was of the opinion that where it's mixed use, that the special permit for the mixed use would also cover the retail and service establishment. When I talked to Tom, he he didn't agree. He said, I think you should be set, to be safe, you should pl- apply for a separate special permit for the, for those uses. Um, just to have it on the record. So I never, uh, like to, uh, debate things with town council. Um, so I just, uh, we did it. And, uh, so that you, you, I filed that with Gail. So just if you see another publication for this property, for retail and service establishment, it's in conjunction with the. Within multifamily that we've already applied for. And that will be, the hearing on that will be October twenty-sixth, and will then be consolidated with what we're doing now.
Okay.
And we're also going to be at the TAC on this on October twenty-first also.
Okay, so what else would potentially be on our next agenda on the twenty-sixth, before I open it to the public? TAC findings, what else haven't we covered? Done site civil, we're getting an update from DPW.
Hopefully, yep.
Board members, anything else you think? I mean, we we've heard, seen some, uh, is there additional lighting we need to get into?
On the. No, there's not really any other lighting on the building. Just the wall packs that were addressed in the first presentation.
And the signage you kind of get into with the address and the, the name of the property.
Yep.
Okay, again, don't want to. I mean, we commit, you come in with a good package to begin with. We've covered a few things. Uh, tonight.
Did we need to address anything else on the site or civil or landscaping while we have Carlton and Jackie here with us tonight?
I had nothing specific, but I would defer to. Chip or others, if there was specific questions on landscaping. I don't know about site civil, I think we'd be looking for DPW responses, but.
Yeah, and that, um, that folder will includes that memo from, uh, Carlton's team as well, just responding to anything outstanding, so.
Yep. Do you want to bring up the landscape plan, just so we can have a look?
Uh, yeah, you know what I'll do is, um, I'll stop sharing in Carlton or Jackie if you guys want to bring that up.
Been revised for the patio, right Savario?
Uh, the patio sketch we included in the plans, but, um, we didn't, uh, update the, the final package there.
Yeah.
So just subject to review from the board, figured we'd just throw it out there.
So this landscape plan was, was designed prior to the patio area, so.
Oh, out front, yeah, yeah.
Well, if the board is amenable to the patio area, then we'll, we'll revise the landscaping plan.
Yes.
Yeah, and everything else is the same still, right Jackie? It's just that one section that we just revised, right? So everything else is the same.
So it's really on the corner, right? That other areas stays the same, the stuff in the back, along the side there, yeah.
Correct.
And there's some sort of granite wall, I think, around the seating area as well.
Yes.
All right, why don't we update this to, to, um, show that patio and if there's any questions, maybe we cover quickly next time. Sound okay?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Well, you get, like, you've, you've done very well at, um. Uh, materials basically for the building, and I'm, I'm looking at this patio area. You should give us some information on, I mean, you noted some materials, but I'd like to get some cuts. On, uh, what you're doing on the patio from the paving to the wall. Yeah, it looks like Tyco block or something like that. Yeah, Tyco block.
Yeah.
That sort of information, so that could be added as well.
Okay, you just want a, um, a spec sheet on the actual material.
Yeah, you know, you've got, you've got a photograph with a, um, with, uh. With the information, uh, on it as well, like in what you've already gotten your package, just duplicate for the landscape.
You got it. Well, yeah, we'll formalize it.
Do we have the material sheet for the, the building itself?
It's included in the architectural package, yeah.
Yeah.
Savario, this is Joe here. Did we talk about snow storage? You have a, you have that box on the plan, or are you going to be just shipping it out, trucking it out?
Uh, well, the site, the site itself is going to be a little limited, so there'll be very little onsite. It'll have to be trucked out.
Yeah, I kind of, I think I remember hearing about that.
Yeah, and I think, I think the first folder I submitted, I actually did do an O and M and dropped it in there. I don't know if you guys got that, but I can resend, but the snow storage was addressed in there.
I mean, you have a little space, but that would kill all your landscape.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, if you can just resend, I thought I saved everything you sent, but I don't see it. Uh, civil renderings, architectural lighting. Yeah, if you can resend it.
Um, you got it. You know what I'll do is I'll send along a, um, an email to Brian with both folder links that we have, both what we submitted the first time and the second time.
I think Savario, we held out the O and M plan. I think we held.
Did we? Okay.
We did, because I.
I can send along.
I, you know, that usually is near the end, and I didn't want to be presumptuous sending an O and M.
I know, I'm getting, I'm getting ahead. I know, I'm, you know. Just trying to get ahead.
I usually don't send that stuff until the board asks for it.
I was, you know, I was never a good student. I was really bad at my homework, so I'm trying as an adult to be a little bit better about that, you know?
So, so a question I have is, on one of the renderings you have, which is on the ball field side of the, of the building. Is this wonderful hedge running, running along the side of the building. But that's not yours.
No, that, that was creative liberty on the, uh, renderers part.
Yeah, I mean, it's fantastic. Can we get one of those? I mean, it gives a nice.
We should ask Jackie, I don't know.
That area.
Yeah, there's a, um, there's a municipal fence along that line. I think the town owns it. So I don't know how that works. I don't know, maybe you guys can tell me, but, um, I don't know, and then maybe Jackie can weigh in on the, uh, on the hedge itself, but.
But, uh, I don't know how much room there is, but maybe a vine that grows on the. But I I don't know how much room there is, but maybe a vine that grows on the fence.
I think the town would work with us, don't you, Chip, if you want to do something there?
Well, I think the fence is going to come down as part of the construction, and then he's going to have to replace it with something.
Yeah, it's a little tight to think that it's going to maintain that fence. Next to the building. Would no, would not coming down.
Severo, we can talk to Bill Renaud, the town engineer.
Okay.
On that, you know, to see what what we might be able to do together to make it look good for everybody.
Yeah, that sounds good. STEM renderers put ideas in people's heads, you know? You get them, they're fired.
Like it.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question about the information we've heard tonight on this application, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands going up, we'll close it to public testimony for the evening.
Brian, is this a, Mr. Chairman, is this another one that the boat can't be put around until TAC?
Correct.
So should we?
Yeah.
Should we continue this to the meeting after TAC again?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you, Severo. I think we should, because you know, I think. Well, you tell me, board, I think this is, this, you know, Severo has been so prepared, I don't think this is going to hopefully take too long, so I don't know what else we're going to cover. We just need to kind of get some stuff back from the town.
You got revised landscape.
Yeah.
So I I would, I would prefer to. Leave it until the twenty sixth.
Yeah, Severo, you okay with that? I I don't think we're going to really, you know, until we go to TAC, there's not a lot left to do, really.
Yeah, I mean, I defer to the board. I mean, whatever you guys want to see additional detail on at this point. So if you feel like the twenty, doing it after the twenty first is best, yeah, it's kind of me.
We got TAC findings here from the DVW, update the landscape plan. Material details on the on the front walkway patio area. And then maybe at that point, a draft on O and M, just to get us thinking about it, because it seems like we're. It just doesn't seem, you know, depending on what comes out of those other items, there may not be a lot left to talk about, so we might as well. Get a draft of that. Start you thinking about some of the operations on the site, right? Yeah. Um, okay. Sound like a plan, so if that, we could continue to October twenty sixth.
I move that we continue this to October twenty sixth.
Yeah, with an extension till the end of the year also, because this is coming up.
And accept the offer of an extension.
Second out.
You, and we'll get a letter from you, Brian, on that extension. Okay. All right, any discussion on the motion to continue the hearing to ten twenty six and extend the time for us to render a decision till December twenty thirty first? All right, voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? All right, thanks for the updates tonight, and we'll talk again in October.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to new hearings for the evening. Appreciate everyone's patience. We are getting there. Three new hearings. First one, twenty three dash twenty seven. At two twenty six Main Street. There's a really long series of trusts involved here, but we'll cut to the chase. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Tony Prime McGee, representing that, I'll say the Caviello family. The two twenty six Main Street. In Wakefield, they're they're on with us tonight and here to answer questions. This is for. An accessory apartment. I finally have an accessory apartment that actually doesn't involve any additions and. And it meets all of the, actually meets all the requirements of the bylaw that that I will go through. To just familiarize the board. With the location of this property, absolutely beautiful home on Main Street, right across from the lake. Can you see it?
Yes.
So it sets up very well for a accessory apartment. It's on the corner of Wave Avenue and White Ave, and it's right across from beautiful Lake One Power. Caviellos have been there for quite some time. They're putting an accessory apartment, which it's already, it already has a kitchen and it's been there forever. But now they want their daughter to live there, so they approached the building department to do some renovations and Ben suggested that they should get an accessory apartment, special permit with your board. So that is why they are here. I'll bring up the plan. I said, this is like a picture perfect plan. So you saw it's a ranch house and what? What the, what they've done is they've done the existing and and they've kind of laid out, as I mentioned, the existing is really not that much different than the proposed, but we're formalizing the accessory apartment. The, it's going to be in the lower level. And then the upper level is the main, is the main home. This has been, this was done by MZO Architects, Andy Zaleski, who's been before you before. As I've mentioned, it meets the requirements from the perspective that the lower level unit, which is the in-law, is seven hundred forty four square feet. So it meets the minimum requirement and the first floor, the total square footage is three hundred and. Thirty feet, so it's twenty two percent the total area. For my bylaws. Okay. So as far as the requirements, if I, I'd like to go through those, Mr. Chair, quickly, if I may?
Sure.
Okay, so paragraph one, as you know, under. The, under. The applicable section of the bylaw, one ninety twenty two A one F states that. It's a purpose and intent of the bylaw to allow accessory apartments. Except with his deed covenants, which there's not on this property. Paragraph two states that the, to have an accessory apartment, the lotum which will be located must meet the minimum lot area. In a minimum lot with requirements of the applicable zone. So. Like to. Address that. And I can send these to you for the record, Mr. Chair. Caviello's property, this was the original plan that was done back in the, in nineteen seventy seven that created the lot. There was a house there before. It was taken down to create these three lots. One on Wave Ave, one on White Ave, and the Caviello's property is lot one. So as you can see, it meets the minimum lot area. It's fifteen thousand three hundred square feet. And it meets the lot width, has a hundred and forty two feet on Main Street, and it has a hundred and forty six in the back, the minimum lot with requirement in the single residence district is a hundred feet. So we're we're in compliance with that requirement of the bylaw.
Okay.
Okay. Then moving on. It requires the owners of one, of the one, one of the owners of the lot and the accessory apartment to occupy one of the dwelling units on the premises. And obviously, the Caviellos, even though they own it in trust, they are the trustees and then have beneficial interest, they will reside there in the main dwelling. And it has to be issued to the owner of the property, which is them, and they acknowledge that there's a change of ownership or a death of removal. That anyone who would take over would have to come back to the board. The special permit would be null. And void. Has to be a declaration of restrictive covenant that they would agree to put on as a condition of your board, so people that buy the property know that that's a requirement. As I just stated, it's on a year to year basis, which they acknowledge. Has to be located, paragraph five has to be located within the principal dwelling, which is happening here. And then paragraph six requires a minimum floor size of the accessory apartment to be three hundred square feet, but in no case shall exceed twenty five percent of the habitable area. So it does meet that requirement. And it can't involve, cannot involve the extension or enlargement of the principal dwelling. None of that is happening here. And the final paragraph states that no more than one accessory apartment for a total of two dwelling units should be permitted per lot, and that's pretty evident by the drawings. That have been presented. Lastly. Caviellos are very popular in the neighborhood. They've been there for quite some time. So they were fortunate that. They just had a neighborhood cookout. And everybody signed their petition and support, and this includes. Both properties in the rear. Behind them, both, both owners. One is eight white av and the other is. I, yeah, I think it's eight way, it's it's eight white. And I think seven wave there in the back, and then we have the properties on Main Street on the opposite sides. Of of White Ave and Wave Ave that are their neighbors, but separated by street. They also sign this too, so. Anyone in the, in their immediate area is fully in support of this. They reviewed the plans and looked at it. They're just happy the Caviello family is staying there.
Can we just get a copy of that for the record, Brian, please?
You can, yeah, with the plans, yep.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I've got that plane you showed before. Did I send that? Different lots, but I didn't, I don't remember seeing this.
I didn't send you the neighborhood support. I just got that. Did I include the the? The plan, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, showing the three lots and the deed.
I did, okay.
Yeah, yeah. That demonstrated the lot width and lot area. Yes, we have that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so just a neighbor support letter for the record. Thank you. Okay.
With all that said, with all due respect, I would respectfully request that the board consider granting a special permit if requested.
All right, thanks, Brian. For the record, we did receive correspondence from the fire department and Kline Com, who had no comments or objections to the project. Just for the record. Board members, any comments, questions?
Brian, I have no problem with this, but I'm just curious, was that kitchen always there in the basement?
Yeah.
Was it ever accessory apartment before or did?
No, they, 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 you know, the Caviello's position is that was built, it's a legal kitchen, it's two kitchens. You know, that's not uncommon in houses. And, you know, that that was always there, but, you know, Ben doing his job, you know, they went, their contractor went in for building permit to do renovations. And asked who was going to be living there, and they were honest. They said it's going to be our da- our daughter. Who's going to live there. For the record, her name is Linda DiMarco. And Ben said he needed accessory apartment and he's a special permit. He's right, so the Caviellos are doing the right thing by the bylaw.
Yeah, all right, no, scarce, yeah, I have no problem with it.
And Ben won't issue the, Ben won't issue the permit for renovations until they get the special permit. He can't.
Well, it's, you know, Brian, it's one thing to have a kitchen in there, but having bathroom and living room and all the rest of this stuff, it's a little over the top. It's very suspicious. But I feel that we're going to legalize this, no matter how it was used in the past. Because I can't believe this wasn't used as an apartment.
Yeah, and and I think the building inspector was right. So. Well, I know he was right, so that's why we're here. Anyone else? Okay. I'll open up to the public. If anyone who is here has a comment or question. About this project, please raise your hand in the Zoom call.
Many participants left, but seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony.
I move, I'm, I move that we grant permission. For the special permit. As presented to us this evening, because it meets all the criteria. Under the bylaw.
I second that motion.
And that, and that we. Take a signature and letter. For the security. On a yearly basis. So you guys have the wording of that.
Yep, we would, it would be in the decision, yeah, okay. All right, so that adjusted motion's been seconded. Any discussion on it? All right, regular voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? All right, so that's approved. Now they can get the building permit.
Thank you.
The appeal period, of course, Brian, but yeah, let's get that, we'll get it filed quickly.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
All right. Moving right along, next new hearing, twenty three dash twenty eight Kerwick LLC at thirty five Chestnut Street. Okay, for the record, Mr. Chair, attorney Brian McGee, representing Kerwick LLC. And I'm just going to get things teed up here, if I may.
Sure. Thank you.
Again, here on behalf of Kerwick LLC, this is regarding. Thirty five Chestnut Street. The principal of Kerwick is Ed Kirby. Eddie, you here?
I am, can you hear me?
Can hear you, yeah. I, the board might remember Ed, Ed did the beautiful job at Fort Wakefield Ave. Significant renovation, and he's he's back again. Here in Wakefield to do another project. He's meticulous with everything that he does. All the public safety folks love him because he does everything perfect as far as code and so forth. Also, on his behalf is John Ogren from Hayes Engineering. And and. Phoenix Architects. And I think it's going to be Andrew, who's going to be handling this on behalf of Andrew Jones, on behalf of Phoenix, not Peter. So as we get into this, so I think I always kind of like to do an introduction to kind of familiarize the board with the area. A little Google tour, so the property is at thirty five Chestnut. Right at the intersection of North Avenue, which you copassed Anton's cleaners, you you take a left. And his Anton's heading up Chestnut towards downtown. And. Thirty five Chestnut Street is right here. Beautiful home, kind of in a state of disrepair when I bought it. It's got two residential units upstairs. It was a three residential unit building. And then the bottom floor was converted into a law office. Years ago and used that way. And the building's kind of deteriorated. It hasn't been really. Kept up. And and as it usually does, he's going to kind of do a, you know, you know, frame up restoration of this property. He's kind of got it, completely got it. All new infrastructure, all new utilities. He's going to put in a central sprinkler system, fire system for the whole property. And what he wants to do is he wants to. Convert the commercial unit into residential and make it three residential units. So that's his goal. The property I submitted, I think a copy was at the board in nineteen forty eight, it allowed a third unit upstairs without a kitchen in it. The the assessor's records, I'm going to show you. Have a, let me bring those up.
That was awesome, Brian. This is great. A decision nineteen forty eight, this is awesome.
Nineteen forty eight decision, yeah, thank you, Gail. If anyone finds, anyone can find it, it's Gail.
Yeah, in the archives, nice.
She, great, I mean, unbelievable records down that she keeps, that she pulls these things out of nowhere, so. So that is so valuable to property owners. So and and to lawyers that don't have to, you know, go crazy. So this is the old assessors card going back to the fifties. You can see it says. Three slash office. I don't think it was ever, Ed, I don't think it was ever three units plus an office, right? It was, it it wasn't laid out that way. It was either. Three residential units and at some point, an office component got. Put in for, for one of the units, as I, as I mentioned. So, but there is a history.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so we're not here trying to say, oh, we have a right to a four unit building, right? It's only a right to a three unit building, and that's all we're looking to do here. So that just kind of gives you that record. And I mentioned, there's currently three units, one of which is a lot. And I'd mentioned there's currently three units, one of which is a law office that is now, has now moved out. Um, we believe that, you know, the residential use is gonna be a much less intense use than the office. I mean, you know. My office, I have employees that come to Park every day and I have clients and real estate closings and people in and out all day long. Uh, and this is gonna be a residential use, which will obviously be a a much less intense use. It's a great location for residential use. Right across the street from the railroad station. You can't really get any closer. So I think what the way I'm gonna go about this, I'm gonna hand it over to Andrew and he'll kind of talk about some of the existing conditions. And what we propose to do to this total rehab architecturally, um, which is being led by Phoenix. Uh, and then I'm gonna get into the site plan a little bit in conjunction with uh John Ogrin. So Andrew, could you maybe uh take the screen and walk the board through what you're looking to do here?
Absolutely. Thank you, Brian, for the introduction. So for record, my name's Andrew Jones, representing Phoenix Architects. Um, I'm going to share the screen real quick. Can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So as you can tell, um, and as Brian had mentioned, we we plan on doing a full gut renovation to this project. Including turning the law office into one residential unit. Uh, we plan on doing replacement windows, new siding, kind of cleaning up the facade of it a little bit, but. At the same time preserving the old historic, or not historic, but eighteen eighty Victorian feel that has currently. So here's a proposed graphic of the front. Um, so how we set this up is we're gonna show the existing floor plan, each floor, and then the proposed. So you can start to see what we're trying to incorporate here. Um, as you could see in those pictures that Brian had showed, there's existing stairs on the outside. Uh, again, to the units above, we plan on removing all that. Preserving the portico in the front. And then, as you can see in the back, we're starting to clean up this area. And we're turning into a uh porch for both the first and second uh story units. So as you walk in, in the existing, in the foyer, here's where the law office currently sits. There's a stairwell that goes up in the front, also one in the back. What we're proposing is preserving the stairwell on the front. And we're removing the one in the back as we're providing a sprinkler system uh with throughout the building. So the first uh floor becomes a two-bedroom unit, very well sized. As you can see, you come into a mudroom, half-bath, kitchen, dining eleven towards the front. Two bedrooms in the back, laundry and bathroom. And then, as I had mentioned before, door out to the first unit's porch. As you go upstairs. Uh, jumped ahead, as you go upstairs, you come to a hallway. There's a door to the front, which gets you into unit two, very similar to unit one, where there is two bedrooms towards the back. And then living, dining, kitchen uh towards the front. Um, it's a little bit different from what's there now, as you can see in the existing, where. Uh, the first unit is currently kind of jammed in the front here with one bedroom, two bedroom, living and kitchen. And the second unit is in the back right here with the kitchen, dining, living room. And then it uses the stairwell out back to get up to the third story. So as you can see, the second unit's two bedrooms are right up here in the attic. What we're proposing is doing two shed dormers on each side of this building. To get a little bit more square footage up there. It's owned for a three-story, so we're turning it from two and a half to three-story. And that allows us in this uh proposed attic plan to now have two bedrooms, walk-in closet, kitchen, dining, living. Um. As you can see, comparing uh existing to proposed front elevation, we're removing all the stairs in the front here. Um, besides that, you can start to see the dormers, we're tying into the existing roof, but we're still keeping a lot of the Victorian charm with the turret. And then one other thing to note is, because we gave the first two units, uh, the porch access in the back, we're giving the third unit. Access over the existing portico in the front, so a new French door and a deck towards the front. Um. You can start seeing the shed dormer on the side here. Um, compared to what was before, a very small A dormer. Besides that, a lot of the windows we're trying to preserve, as you can see, we're starting to add a more traditional grill pattern to the windows. And then in the back here, you can start to see the two-level porch uh that we're proposing.
Andrew, if I can stop you before you proceed, that.
Yep.
The patio on the front is serving the second unit or the rooftop unit?
It's so it's rooftop unit. Let me actually jump back real quick, cuz that will help.
Because it looks like it's on the second story, but.
It is, but so what we actually had created was a little mudroom on the second story for unit three. So you come through this door, create a little mudroom vestibule, and then you go up to the attic of that unit. So we're providing the deck basically off the second story, but it's for the third story unit. And the reason why we did this was cuz we did not want it, you know, a three-story porch off the back and it just feel extremely tall. And not really fitting in with its surroundings, so that was kind of intentional move on our part.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I just.
Yep.
Not sure if I heard you correctly the first time, thanks.
Yep, and so going to the back, as you can see, just kind of cleaning up this rear elevation. Uh, again, some symmetry back here, lining windows in the porch. Um. And then here's the left elevation. Once again, removing any of those exterior stairs, going to the existing units. And just kind of cleaning up this uh left-hand elevation a little bit. And then this is basically a materials packet, starting to label some of the stuff, materials we're gonna be using. So as you could see before, it was a yellow faded vinyl siding. We're actually proposing a hardy board. And uh sea glass color that I feel like will really complement the uh building. And then uh timberline architectural series, uh shingles, gray shingles. And Harvey Classic Series vinyl replacement windows. So that's what I have for today. Um, is there any questions?
Excellent.
Those should be, uh, those were, those are new construction windows, right, Andrew?
Yep, exactly.
Yep.
Yep, Ed, do you wanna talk about how you're gonna go about, I mean, the the quality you're gonna put into this as far as the gut goes?
Say that again, Brian?
Wanna talk about how the quality that you're gonna put into this, like you did with Wakefield Ave on on the gut, like all new, all new utilities, plumbing?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be all new piping, um, it'll be all new electric uh in-unit uh hydrostatic air. Uh, HVAC units with combination boilers in the basement, um. Talking about bringing in a new uh inch and a quarter domestic water line. Alongside of a new uh two-inch fire line. We have to bring in for the fire uh fire um sprinkler system. As well as uh updating, we cambered the sewer. It's in good shape, however. The sewer line uh would make sense while we have it dug open to uh replace the sewer line as well. I think that's just smart money to spend there. Um, but e- everything will be brand new and, you know, recess lighting updated, you know, uh, basically um gourmet kitchens. Uh, everything, everything will be uh done uh top-notch, same as I did over the full Wakefield Avenue. I, I just think, I think the hardy board is uh something that's really gonna pop over there with the uh. All white trim as well as the uh, the white balances on the decks. I think everybody's kind of going to black windows and stuff, but I, I like the old, older uh white type look myself. Uh, one neat feature that we have to this property is up in the third, the third unit up up top. We're actually gonna, Andrew and um Phoenix, actually turn that uh turret into a um. Into a study area, which is kind of, kind of cool. I was actually contemplating making that a uh. A uh walk-in closet, but uh it didn't really, the layout didn't work that way, so we're gonna utilize that turret. The ceiling's up on that third floor, pretty, uh, pretty tall, so. Um, I think it's gonna be a beautiful unit up there. And uh the way that they laid that deck out too with that mudroom, I think is a real nice feature for that um, that third unit. Off the front of the house with that, that smaller deck out there. So it actually gives them a little, you know, a little area, cuz the, the property's not that, you know, the space out back isn't that large. Per se, it's a smaller uh, smaller lot, so I think the decks are gonna be key as far as their uh, any outdoor space, you know?
Ed, could you, um, cuz this is, this is a finding, so the board doesn't really get into, you know, site plan approval, but they always wanna know. What are you planning on doing for landscaping? Cuz it's kind of a mess right now.
Yeah, just whatever, whatever uh the square footage would allow, but we're gonna update it uh similar to what I did over the full Wakefield. I mean, I can get you, I can call out the plants and whatnot that we're gonna put in there. Um, but we're gonna landscape the front of it as well as the walkways as much. It's a limited, it's a limited amount of area.
Yeah.
Uh, and out back, you know, back, if you can see, there's quite the tree line already out back. All the trees are gonna remain. Um. Out back of the property, they've already been pruned back by the previous owner, the attorney Egan's out there. And uh prune those trees back pretty, pretty good, so I'm not, I'm not really touching any of the trees out back. Um, but the landscaping in front, the, the limited space that we have will be all updated and new.
How many parking spaces are available? I'm gonna get to that next.
Oh, okay. All right, on materials, yeah, if I can go back to materials.
Yep.
I don't know if you covered it or didn't include it cuz it, it's not being changed, but I assume there's some work being done on those new patios and that front porch area. Is any of that? Is it wood? Is it vinyl? You know, what's the?
No, it's all gonna be, it's gonna be some sort of plastic, really, you know, uh. Uh, timber tech or something, or Trex or something along the lines of uh, something that's gonna hold up real well and look good.
Okay, okay, just.
It'll be all, it'll be all uh plastic or PVC railings as well. Um. The, the main columns themselves will probably be, uh, we'll keep those round, the round shape that they have right now and replace those newly. They are, they are a little compromised right now. We are gonna keep the uh, the brick look on the stairs up the front there and probably do either some pavers or maybe even board. Concrete for the walkway leading up to it. Um. So that's something.
You gotta try to preserve the front door as well, Ed, right?
Yeah, the front do, the front, that, that, that would be a pretty expensive door to replace off front. I like that. It's actually got. Um, I believe it's got lead, uh, lead, lead glass in it, one of the, probably it's a very old door and it's got the uh, the dental work in the front. And um, a little bit of brass on the bottom to it, so it's, it's a door worth saving. As well as that um. Weather vane, it's not really a weather vane up top of the turret up there, but that's gonna be taken off, sandblasted and painted black and put back up. Um. So that's where we're at there.
Okay, any other comments or questions from other board members? I think we've covered, again, at the end of the day, you're looking for a finding, so we don't, we don't have to go too far with it, but I just.
Sure, okay.
But you are gonna get into parking, Brian, and that's certainly a question I'm sure others had, but anything else, board members, at this time? Well, looks like a nice, nice property that. We'll get here. All right, Brian, back to you then.
Great. Thank you. Can I have the screen back, Andrew?
Yep, no problem.
So John, are you here?
I am here.
Great, so you, so um. Why don't you, John, maybe kind of walk on the, go through the site plan a little bit if you would, and then you can, you can touch on the parking and then I'll get into the detail of it. With the, with the board on the parking requirement, um. After you're done.
Yeah, so um, on the left, you have the existing conditions plan. It shows some of those stair, the, the. Stair accesses off to the left of the building, um. That Andrew discussed, those are gonna be removed. The proposals on the right, you can see those are removed in the back. You can see. Um, basically, the, the existing house shuts out. It's only one story in the back and there's bulkhead and. Um. Some stairs and landing on the back, that's all removed. And the proposed, you can see, we're adding the porch to the back. Proposing to keep the same setbacks um as the existing. Um, to that, to that proposed porch. In terms of um, kind of the pavement or parking. Out to the left front of the building. Uh, there's a, a large paved area. Um. And what we tried to do was to fit within that paved area, we're showing. Um, in the proposed nine by eighteen spaces, there's three spaces. Off of, directly off of Chestnut Street, and then there's one space behind that. Uh, which is, would be a tandem parking space. We will have to add a small amount of pavement to extend the pavement. Um. To be able to get that, fit in that second parking space. And I think that pretty much sum up.
Yeah, so I'm gonna touch on the parking a little bit, so, you know, with, with three units. Red units, you could say that you need one and a half, so you need five spaces. We've got four. Um, but the non, can, you know, this is, this is a less intense use, as I've mentioned. Um, from the law op, from the law office use by adding this residential. And what our bylaw provides is it talks about a change of use in parking, and what it says is we're a non-conforming use. Is increased in area or changed to a use requiring more parking. Than the present use according to the tables. Additional spaces shall be provided in the month necessary. So the expansion or change in use will not result in any increased violation of the requirements of this article. So the, these, the uh office use required more than two spaces. So it's not, so we are not changing uh to a use. Requiring more, we're actually changing to a use requiring less. Um, so, you know, I, I think we're fine with the four. I talked to John. If the board wanted us to put one more tandem spot in upside. Um, we could do that, so we could, you know, bring it to compliance with parking and have five spaces, John. I actually had John, asked John to kind of do a plan to show that, so you could digest and see how it looked. So John, could you bring that up for the board?
Sure. So basically, same parking layer as before, what we looked at was adding another tandem space um to the end of this. So we'd have basically three parking spaces here and then two. Uh, to the right of that. Uh, we did look into, you know, I did look into trying to maybe get another space in here. There's just, to get a nine by eighteen, there's just not enough room to the. Existing house, um, so that would get us up to the five parking spaces.
What is that? I guess my question is, how do you use that this space?
You've gotta manage it with the tenants, Chip. There's no other way, you know, the pocket, the property's just limited with parking, I mean.
What, what, can you do two uh compact cars, John? As, next to the house?
Um, seven and a half.
Chip, you think you gotta get it?
It's potentially, um.
So what you're getting at, Chip, is have two tandems and then one instead of a, a triple, triple.
Correct, cuz the triple, I, you know, how does, how does that person get in a row?
Yeah, it's not easy, you know, you get, i- it takes some management. There's no question about it, Chip, you're right.
Yeah, and we have, basically.
Assigned spaces as you lease things up. And I would also suggest the added this space be done in a paver or. Something creative that isn't hot top. Whether it's the, you know, drive-on. Drive-on pavers that you can grasp through or. Because maybe, maybe, you know, I, I, I could hear an argument. That you don't need the parking because you're gonna be so close to the train. The people living here probably could potentially only have one car. Or maybe a second car that doesn't get used that much.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's an argument under the bylaw, we don't have to have it, but I think the board always wants to have it in compliance with what's there now. And, and Ed, I mean, you'd like to get another space if you can, right? I mean, it'd be a good thing.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
If the board can work with us on where to locate that, we're more than happy to, to. To do it. We, we actually would like to do it.
I, I, I would like to see the five and I, I'm not care necessarily about the size. But, but I think the reason I'd wanna see the five is because. On a snow day, when everybody's supposed to be off the road. Is, it, you know, maybe you don't use that space all the time, but during the winter, maybe you do to get your car off the street. Cuz that street is pretty heavily parked at times. And so, see, I could see during the week or something like that. To avoid having to shift cars that you park out front, but when it comes to snow days, where the heck do you park? It provide them with an opportunity to park, maybe not all the time. Maybe it even gets used as a patio area or something like that, particularly if it's paved, but it's available.
Yeah, agreed.
Could we make the spaces, I mean, they don't have to be nine by eighteen, I mean, that's, you could, you could. Maybe, does it, if you do eight or eight and a half, does that help you?
Yeah, I mean, we, we basically, we basically have about seventeen and a half feet from the property line to the existing house. So with that, you could go, you know, basically down to eight, just over eight feet wide.
They gotta be able to open their doors.
Yeah, the one, the one thing is, it is, it is tight on, um, the cleaners is very, it's pretty much read on the lot line. So it, it is, there is not a lot of space in there. So if you did, it, it does make it a little more difficult in terms of opening your door.
But we've done these multifamilies with eight, with eight and a half by whatever spot, spaces.
Yep.
And two eight and a halfs is seventeen, so. I, I mean, I, I'd rather see that if you can make it work than the three, but I would agree if we can get a fifth, and it sounds like you'd want a fifth. Let's see if we can do that and just encourage compact cars in those back spots, right?
Yep.
And I would suggest that when you're doing the landscaping, those back two spots be something other than hot top. Right? Pavers or something that will not just look like a big asphalt blob in the front of the.
Are you saying, are you saying the two, the tandems as well that are along the, uh, side over there?
I'm just saying the two back ones.
Yeah.
They're gonna be side by side.
Right. So you just like to see the pavement, uh, terminate as far as where the three, three cars and the three in the front row are?
That would be, I mean, I mean, they're doing such a beautiful job with the, with the building. That if you plop a big hunk of hot top in, it's just gonna look weird.
Right.
And if you did pavers or something for those two spots where the end is, now that might, might be a little different and.
Yeah, I can absolutely do that. Yep.
And I think that, and I think that's a great idea. It's gonna change the look, cause it, 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 there'll be too much pavement there for the, it will affect the aesthetics of the house to have.
You know, and maybe, and maybe you wanna look at doing all the parking in pavers rather than hot top. It certainly would be more in keeping with the property.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be dug up anyway with the fire line that's going in, so I could pretty much do anything there.
I mean, certainly your call. I, I think doing pavers and, and not lining it, but just having a space for five vehicles, like, like everybody says, you can plow it in the winter and and, and people, you know, people will be respectful of get, being able to tuck them in off the street when they need to.
Right. Yeah, to, to, to Brian's point, it's pretty busy over there right now. I gotta, I just put up a no parking sign, cause the restaurant was having all kinds of people park on my, my spaces over there, cause there's nobody there right now. It's totally vacant. So I had to put up a sign and they're honoring it right now, but. Um, yeah, I mean, I could put.
What restaurant do you get overflow from?
I believe it's the diner, the, the breakfast place that's right there.
Really?
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I think it was one of the waitresses, cause she come running over. I was over there on Sunday. Come running over and said, oh, I'm sorry I parked. I said, no, no big deal, but, um, you know, we have.
Idea of doing it all paper said.
Yeah, we, we could do that. Yep, not a problem.
And then you can also do your walkway up to your stairs and something different as well as compared to hot top. And I think that would bring a real nice look to that whole building. Is this gonna be rental or condos?
Uh, well, right, right now, depending upon what the market's gonna do, I may end up keeping them, uh, but I, I'll probably lean towards making them into condos and similar to what I did over Wakefield Ave, I ended up keeping three of the units at Wakefield Avenue. Um, so I was skinning the game over there, as you guys probably remember. Oh, yeah. Um, but, um, yeah, so I, I think, um, at the very least, I'll probably end up keeping two of them. So like, I, I don't know, I don't, I just, I really don't know just yet. I mean, I like the location. It's great. I think, you know, I mean, the rents are going through the roof right now, so I think that, you know, I think, I think it may be wise to keep Ms. Rental units, but you know, still lean towards having them as condos in case down the road I wanted to sell them, you know?
Yeah, I think it's a great location and I like what you're doing with the property.
Yeah, I like, I like the way that we're keeping the overhang up there. Like they did a super job, Phoenix. I was, you know, pleasantly surprised with the way that they were able to, you know, have, have the units layout, cause right now, if you walk in there, there's, you know, on the first floor, just wide open with carpet and you know, old floors and, uh, it's, it's a pretty, pretty rough shape right now, but it'll clean up nice.
Very nice job.
Okay, anything else? I see a hand up, so. Okay, thank you, board members. We'll open up the public at this time. If you have any comments or questions, please raise your hand. I currently see one hand up and the hand went away.
I apologize. I hit that by accident. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, this is LaMora Freeman. I'm actually representing, uh, Dish Wireless on the next application.
Oh, okay.
I hit, I had, I hit my hand by accident. That was.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
No worries. Okay, we're, we're getting there.
He's getting answered.
We appreciate it. Anyone else have a comment or question on this project?
He doesn't know that we don't take wireless until twelve.
Yeah, we still have some time. All right. See no hands up. We'll close the public testimony. Rails, rails, board members. Um, okay. Um, I think we've heard all we need to hear again, that they're just looking for a finding here to, um, make alterations to the site, to a non-conforming site, existing non-conforming site. Um, so, um, and it's one of the.
Yeah, what is the actual finding that we're looking for? To say that it's a continuation of a non-conforming?
Well, it's basically, it's a, it, what it is, it's a, the, the, the change.
Change of use.
Yeah, alteration and extensions, cause it's, it's a non-conforming, uh, building too, and we're, we're doing, we're putting Dahmer on. So the change, e- extent, the change, alteration, extension of the non-conforming structure and use by, and the uses by adding the, the third residential, um, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. What I would like to do is, is, is part of this is to have John revise his site plan uh, to put the two side by side back there into, into designate uh, for the plan that the, the whole area is, we're not gonna, uh, stripe spaces, but we're gonna, we're gonna make it pavers.
I think that would be the appropriate.
It's a great, great idea, Chip. It's gonna change the whole look of that property and there's no need, and with a two-family use, a, a three-family use like this, there's no need. If we strike parking spaces, it's just gonna, it's gonna ruin the whole look of, of the property.
Yeah, no, I don't think they need to be striped. We just need a square footage that can handle it.
So let's put it on the plan and that way, and, and John can make that change tomorrow.
Okay, but the, but the request is for a finding with respect to one ninety fifty B.
Fifty B's.
It's not a, not having to find that they're increasing their non-conformity and.
That's right. It's, it's a straight, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Correct. Okay. So there you go.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that, that we find under one ninety dash fifty B that the changes they're making to the site and building are not more detriment, that they're continuing and, and exasperating the non-conformity. However, that non-conformity is, is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I second that motion.
Thank you. And we'll get an updated plan that this will be in accordance with the updated plans.
Yeah.
Changes we discussed. Yes. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Anything, voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah.
Joe?
Uh, yes.
Oh, sorry.
You're on a line. Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And, and I've, oh, yes. Okay, uh, thank you for your presentation, Ed. Looking forward to a, a nice upgraded project here. Uh, looks good and we'll just, uh, we'll get the final plan and then get it going.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank, thanks to board. Thank you, Gail, if you're still there. Thanks for the help.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last new hearing. Twenty-three dash twenty-nine, Joseph A. Curly, trustee of the Micro Realty Trust, at ten to twelve Chestnut Street.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the, the, the micro trust, Joe Curly is here. Uh, he's online. Uh, they are the owners of the property. Um, this is, uh, property, uh, known and numbered as ten, twelve Chestnut Street. Um, I will bring up a site plan. This is kind of near uh, the downtown and, you know, I, I should probably stay consistent. Let me just, I'm already, I'm already on Chestnut Street with my, with my, uh, my zone, so I can take it right there. Just to let you know where it is. Here we go. So this is, uh, ten, twelve Chestnut Street. Uh, there's the Santan de Bank Building heading towards downtown. Um, and here's the property right here. The par, property has some parking over here with a sheer driveway, so these spaces are associated with this property. And then it has a huge parking lot right here. This parking lot's used to the property and it's also used by, I think it's thirty-five Albion, which is a, a building that's owned by the Curly family too, but there's plenty of parking. And this, this building historically had a number of uses, boarding house, uh, I think it was retail at one point. The assessors' records currently have it as a, as a four to eight family. Uh, the Curly's bought it in nineteen seventy-seven, uh, is in, they've always maintained eight units there uh, over the years. Um, unfortunately, it had a catastrophic fire uh, in two thousand twenty. Uh, and it's been vacant since then. Uh, and now the Curly's, uh, have worked through the, all the insurance process and and all the stuff that you have to do after a fire with very significant fire. It's all burnt out on the inside. And, um, I call it a reconstruction. It's really not. Uh, what they wanna do is they wanna restore it. Uh, and they don't wanna restore it with, um, with eight units. They wanna restore it with six. So they just wanna make the units more efficient. Um, so in your application, um, I, I went to Ben and, you know, talked to him about a restoration after, after a fire. Uh, and so under one ninety dash fifty-three of our bylaw, it allows for restoration, says any non-conforming structure may be restored and used regardless of the estimated restoration cost, provided the newer restored structure is not substantially more non-conforming than the former structure. So I think we meet that requirement with, with, um, six units. Um, and, you know, but there's also gonna be not a footprint change, but there's gonna be like a little alteration to the structure. That Peter will show you. Peter Sandors from Phoenix is, is handling this. Um, so I'm also, I've also requi, required a finding, a request of the finding on this under one ninety fifty B as well um, for the work that's gonna be done on the property. So that kind of familiarizes you with the property. I feel like I'm, you know, I, I think I have a record of, of the number of folks that I'm, uh, have, I've represented that have, have had catastrophic fires. Um, so this is just another one I'm adding to my list. I represented Meadowbrook Golf Club in Reading. And they, uh, their clubhouse, uh, burnt down. We per, we permitted it to build a thing and it was ninety percent complete and it burned down again uh, before they moved into the new clubhouse. So it's starting to get a little bit nervous with all, like, all the. With, and you know, the church, obviously, Jim. So, um, so with that said, um, Peter, i- if you could, I'm gonna hand it over to you, and if you could go through the floor plan to show the board what is there now, what was there before the fire for the eight units? And then, and then to show those eight units and show what we wanna do now, that would be great, just to set the table of the.
So this is a finding, Brian, again, under one ninety dash fifty.
Yeah, it's, it's two.
Are you, but as eight goes to six, is it because you're altering the look that you're gonna call it a?
Yeah, yeah, because.
An intensification, but it really isn't, is it?
Well, but we're also, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, we're putting like a little addition, not on the footprint, but up top, right?
It's very small, just a little bit up on the third floor. That's correct.
Yeah, so there's like a little alteration to the building here, true, Chip. So, um.
So you can't do it by right because you're going from eight to six kind of thing?
Yeah.
Though you're reducing the number?
Yeah, we can't do it.
Okay. All right. Sounds pretty simple, actually.
In, in plus, we've got, this is, um, this is the site plan. So this is like a split zone. Um, so we don't, basically this, it's non-conforming, so the, the alteration of the structure by what Peter's gonna do i- is, i- it, it also needs a finding. So, um, so what we're, what we're looking for is two things. We're looking for the board to overrule the building inspector. And it's a friendly overruling, because you know, Ben said, yeah, I know they got, you know, I, I want them to do it. I don't wanna make, cause what it says is we, it says under one ninety fifty-three, any non-conforming structure may be restored and used regardless of the restoration cost, provided that the newer restored structure is not substantially more non-conforming than the former structure. We're saying to Ben, Ben, it's pretty obvious we're going to eight to, eight to six. He goes, I don't make those calls. The zoning board does, so I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna deny you friendly, so I give you the ticket to get to the board. And then, you know, I'll expect they'll probably overrule me, which is fine, but they've made that decision, not me. So I'm looking for an overruling of the building inspector. And then I'm looking for a belt and suspenders finding under one ninety, uh, fifty also, so. So Peter?
Hey. Be able to share the screen here. Are we seeing it now?
On your glasses.
Yeah, I take it.
Yeah, why don't you have Andrew or, uh, Steve step in?
Oh, wow.
We're gonna have it here. One second.
Peter, did that hurt?
No, I'm not paying. Can we see it now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just gonna fast forward to, um, the exit existing. So we have an existing first floor. There's, um, two very small units in here. There's front set of stairs, back set of stairs. There's even a space in here that's kind of shared with the building that's on Albion Street. Um, we go to the second floor. Uh, there's two or three units in here. They're actually hard to um, differentiate, because sometimes you go in one to another. Um, but again, you can see the two sets of stairs and the set of stairs to the third floor.
Are these basically studios, Peter?
Yeah, pretty much studios. To be absolutely truthful, it was, it was very difficult in some of these to actually get in, cause of the debris from the fire and there's been, you know, like old mattresses piled up and debris, really, burnt, um, burnt timbers. So we did the best we could to get, to get the, um, dimensions and the spaces clarified. But even in walking through, there was a little clear as where one unit began and another unit ended. I think in the day, I think they're renting sometimes a room, no bathroom. Or other times a room with a bathroom, no living area. Um, sometimes a unit went from one to the other downstairs. So the part of what Brian mentioned was we're a little concerned when we get up onto this, to the mansard, that we may need some, some popping to get some headroom, mostly in this area. Um, forward, not, not by much, where we could, going back now to the post. Where, where we could, we tried to maintain all of the exterior windows and we absolutely maintained, uh, the first floor, uh, footprint. Because of this building now will be completely sprinkled. Um, the units will have one means of beagressing, not two. Uh, that allowed us to break the connection between, uh, the front of the building and the back of the building. So it's, it's kind of like two interlocking L's. Unit one sits in the front, unit two sits in the back. Uh, then when you get upstairs, it repeats that again, uh, with unit uh, three in the front, unit four in the back. Um, then a set of stairs to the third floor. Uh, where we're going, uh, unit in the front, a unit in the back. That one, uh, set or stair, set of stairs going down. Um, we, we, I checked the unit's range between six fifty to about seven thirty square feet. And again, we, we tried wherever we could to maintain it. And again, i- it, we're gonna, I think when this has got it again, we would feel better back in and re-measure some areas to, to see if we're accurate enough, but, um, the, the intent is to maintain as much of the exterior of that building uh, as possible. Uh, and then now we're looking at the, um, existing front, uh, existing right, existing left, and existing rear. And the, and the reason we didn't show proposes is because these will be very similar. Come back. Uh, again, just allowing us some, I have a feeling that we're going to need some relief in this area.
So will you come back for minor modifications once you know?
I, I'm not, will we?
I, I'm not, will we, would that be the process, Brian, once we? It's right, you see in here where we.
Cause you're not theoretically proposing anything right at the moment.
Correct. Yeah, well, we're proposing to, to re- to restore as a, as a six unit. Uh, Peter, where's the bump up potentially gonna be?
It, it potentially could be here on the third floor.
Yeah, you know what, Peter? Hold on a second. Um, it might be better if I, if I. Do it this way, hang on.
Want to show the?
Yeah, give me the screen if I could, if you could.
Uh, stop, yep.
Okay. Is it gonna be up here?
Correct.
Right up here?
Right up there.
So what do you, might have to do bump this front out, this portion?
It, it would, we would, again, we would stay beyond this. We wouldn't be at the edge of this roof line, but I, I could see potentially when we put this bathroom in, we may need to come out. Two feet.
This area, this whole man side or just?
No, just, just in this, this area here.
Yeah.
Left of that upper roof. I, I think that's the tightest area and it was the toughest area to get into. Uh, because of the fire, so.
So you're not, you're not moving, you're not moving all the way out to the, the edge of that second floor roof?
No.
Wow.
He, he basically has no idea really.
Yeah.
He's hoping not to.
I'm, that, that's a good way to put it. Yes, I'm hoping not. Um. It, it looks like, I mean, maybe I'm wrong and maybe we can't even get it to fit within the, the mansard. But again, it was, i- if you guys are not, I'm sure you understand, it's just. Almost impossible to walk in there because.
I mean, I, 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 i- if you recall, if you need that space on that corner. Or even take it out to get some better layout basically. And you just recreate what's that man side is out on the front face because that second floor. Area looks like it was added after the fact. Sometime originally.
Almost like.
Above the porch.
Yeah. Yeah, but I. It wouldn't bother me to, you know, to bring that out probably. Uh, onto the top of that more if you wanted to. Uh, even, even towards the parking lot if you had to.
Right.
Strictly, you gotta bear on something. Um, so I think you're gonna spend a little time there.
Yeah. But I think process wise, if we were to move forward and approve the finding. Based on. The current plan. It could potentially be a minor mod. If you got an update, you had to bump it out, you come up with an updated plan. I don't see any reason why that wouldn't just be. Sort of an, an easy minor mod finding by this board. Cause it's not really changing the, the overall intent of the, the original finding and the overruling, so I. Process wise, Brian, I don't see any problem with that, do you?
Nope.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, was there any other information you want to present, Brian? I think we've got. A overview of the site, some architecture. Layout.
That's it.
And there's plenty of parking, so.
Sure.
Alright, anything else, board members?
I'm good.
Alright, open up the public testimony. Uh, aren't that many people left, but. There may be, um, so if anyone is from the public and wishes to ask a question or make a comment, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing no hands, I'll close it to public testimony.
So Mr. Chairman, I move that we first override. The. Building inspectors ruling. Um. Under, what was it?
One ninety dash fifty three. Well.
One ninety dash.
My apologies, Chip. It's uh, it's the appeal is, is pursuant to uh, Mass General Laws, Chapter forty eight, section eight and Article ten, one ninety sixty five of the bylaw.
Whatever Brian just said.
Yep. That's it. To allow.
I'll second that.
To allow the alteration from eight units to six units.
And to say that the proposed restoration is, is uh, not substantially more non-conforming than the former.
Okay, the proposed restoration is not more dis. More is. That's, boy, am I tired. Has been determined to be not more detrimental.
Not more non-conforming than the.
Not more non-conforming than the existing.
Little bit of different finding. So Brian, are we combining the, the?
No.
Nope. So that's just a, because one ninety fifty B is gonna find basically the same thing.
You, you, yeah, that basically the.
Correct.
Right, but that the alteration, right now we're just overruling the.
Actually.
Inspector.
You, you couldn't.
Then we have to say that the finding is that it's not more detrimental.
Yeah, and, and uh, Mr. Chair, I apologize. Yeah, I think one vote will be better because I did this in one application. So.
Okay.
So I'll combine one vote, so that, that's the first part of it, and then also. Uh, under one ninety fifty dash B. That um, that the um. Proposed changes, extensions or alterations that's shown on, on Peter's plans. And going from eight units to six units. Uh, is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming used to the neighborhood.
I say that was perfectly done.
So as stated.
As stated.
Second.
I think we're gonna go forward with that way in the future.
Um. Okay, any discussion on the um, amended motion as stated? Alright, uh, Chip.
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, that's unanimous. Again, the plan changes, just. Come on back and we'll discuss it as a minor modification, but. Alright, thank you for your patience. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, board members, let's see. Now we have several other matters. I think Brian's sticking around for some of these.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, first one uh relates to case twenty one dash sixteen. One oh one Cedar Street. Discussing a certificate of occupancy. Yep, so uh, this is one oh one Cedar Street, um. The board's quite familiar with this, is, well, let me bring up the other plan uh first. This is Micah Kinda Sterro. Um, I think some board members have gone by. I know. Uh, Chip went by and I know Jim was by the other morning. Um, this was the, this was the old uh, school preschool on Cedar Street that. He converted to a, a four family, uh, it was four family conversion. Uh, and if remember, he came back with these modification plans. Um, and we made changes to it. There was some issues with the original architect. And I went out there and walked the property. He's built this meticulously. Um, according to plan and Jim, I think you can confirm, right? Please?
Yeah, no, it looks great.
It looks unbelievable. I mean, it's just even the neighbors are all out walking around. They can't believe how nice it came. So, so um, but these were, these were the plans, the modification plans that I just want to show you that have been built meticulously. And then the reason we're here tonight. Is um, that he wanted to make a couple of, I think, some minor changes to the landscaping plan. Um, which I think are for the better. Um, and he just wanted to get these. Documented. Hopefully approved and documented. And what the changes are, is. Um, he wanted to uh, put a walkway here. Because the parking is all over here and it kind of made no sense that people had to walk around to go in. So they put a, another, they're putting it, they want to put another paver walkway here. Which we already talked to you, designated board member, Mr. Todd Bell about. Um, and then um, I went back to the recordings on this and. There was discussion that this, in the architectural plan, there's kind of like a blank wall here. And when you, when we, when we did the modification that I showed you those plans, the board said. One thing we'd like is when you're done, we'd like to do a tree in this area. To kind of fill the wall, because it's kind of like a blank wall with no windows here. So this, what he's proposed here is a weeping cherry tree. Uh, in accordance with the board's wishes. And then the only other thing that he's requ- requesting is the trash bin was gonna be in this area. And it made no sense because the neighbor. Was looking, then this is all fenced over here. The neighbor's house is pretty far over here and neighbor was looking at the trash. It was like right next to the house. So it's kind of like a, a hidden area over here and he'd like to put the trap, just move the trash container over here. Won't bother the neighbor and it won't bother the people that live here.
And it's a nice wood.
Yeah.
I think it's a wood or, or vinyl.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's nice.
Trash unit.
Yeah, to have it.
It was, it's not just barrels.
No, it's gonna be in this area right here. And it made.
And I think the other thing, Brian, is I'm not sure if the original plan had a border. On the pavers on the front walk.
I don't know, but you would wanted a border and that's what.
Yeah, he, I looked at it and certainly made sense and I thought the walkway. Across to the driveway made sense too, because. Otherwise you just have brown dirt when everybody just. Walked around that corner anyway.
Yeah, they would cut across, right Chip?
Yeah. And I would agree with Jim that they've done a nice, very nice job.
So what I would like is a board to approve this and then I, I would do a letter from the chair, Dave. That would include, now that it's finalized, your letter would in- include those architectural plans that I showed that it's been built to. That you guys already approved. And it would also include this modified um. Landscape plan and that would. That would be in the record um, for uh, Ben. And then um, they're in the process of doing the landscaping. So he's like really anxious to get a certificate of occupancy, so I would request that one board member just be designated to be able to go by and. And let Ben know it's all completed and good, because it's gonna happen within days.
But wouldn't the letter for me, as we've done in the past, say they've satisfied the conditions of this board and he can issue it at his discretion?
Uh, well, landscaping's being completed. It's not a hundred percent done yet.
Alright, so we need someone to verify that it's done.
Yeah.
And then we can.
And then you can, then you can send that letter.
Right. Yeah, and probably what I would probably do, Dave, is, is just wait. For, for you, for you to get, just do one. Does it make sense just to do one letter?
Yeah, I would prefer to go that way, yeah.
Yeah, so the letter would include have, uh, incorporating those architectural plans that are now stamped that he's built according to. You know, would include this new landscape plan. It would include a, a sign off that everything's been done.
So what's your anticipated time scheduled to get the landscaping done?
I know they're all there, Chip, but you tell, I don't know how long it will take. They're working actively. I'd say within the next week.
Okay, so do you guys want to just keep me the designated person and I'll go by when Brian calls me and. Tells me they're done.
Then you can let Dave know and he can write the letter.
Yeah.
So moved. Yeah.
I second it.
Well, you're already the designated person, right, Chip?
I think so.
Yeah.
I remember, right?
Yeah, so just stay the course and when you. When you um. Verify it's done and let me know, we'll issue the letter. Okay, alright, alright. That's it. Do you need them to vote to uh, allow this change or no? Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we need to, we need to, to find this as a minor modification, so. I move that we accept. Uh, the. Change in walkway and the addition of a tree and the change in the. Garbage trash area. To be deemed a minor modification.
Second.
On the plan dated by Brian. I can't see the dates.
Yep. Uh, nine twenty six twenty two walk plant date.
Okay.
Okay, minor mods according to that plan dated nine twenty six, okay? Second.
Second.
Thanks, Joe. Any discussion? Alright, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Y- yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, so we have the minor mods approved and now we just need the landscaping to be done and we can proceed. Alright? Yep. Alright. Thank you. Alright, next one, twenty three dash nine relating to Three Nelly Street. Minor modification. Okay, um. I think I can be pretty quick on this. Um, uh, JCG Development, Jim Gattuso. Uh, did the property on Three Nelly Street. Um, and. I'm gonna. It's, it was a simple finding. Um, the board, the board basically said to him. You know, it's a finding, but we're really not crazy about what you're building here, so kind of feel free to make changes and. And um. He's a young, young developer, very, very successful guy. He took it to heart and he called me up. He said, I, I, I feel bad. The boys didn't like what I was doing. Uh, because I'm gonna be coming back to town quite a bit, so I wanna, I wanna do something uh, uh, different. I want to change it. Um, so this is what was approved. And. This is now what he's looking to do. Can you see that? So he's got rid of the garages and just kind of made it more traditional instead of funky entries from the side. Um. And. You know, we think it looks better. He thinks it looks better. And, you know, I'm gonna bring up, I had Paul Finocchio do just kind of a, a modified site plan to show that there's. No impacts. On this.
What happened to the garages?
He's got rid of them.
So you lost parking or that's?
Yeah, well, he's got parking out front, but he just said the garage is just like too funky out front. They have two garages next to each other. He, you know. He took to heart what, what the board said and he said, you know, I'd rather just get rid of the garages. I think it looks better. You guys agree it, I mean, you know, might not be perfect, but I think it does look better.
Think he was confusing the board with Chip.
That's fine. It does, it is a better.
It, it, but.
It looks fine by me out. That's, that's a little harsh, I think.
So this is just a table of the new, I just had Paul do this, so you know, I just want to show you that. You know, we're not, nothing's happening here.
We, we see your email, Brian.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Anything good?
No.
Nope, just had the attachment you were trying to open, apparently. Can you see the plan now, Greg?
Yeah.
Yep. Right. This is proposed, just real quick. Nothing's changing on uh, lot area. Frontage isn't changing. Front setback is uh, currently one point seven. We're, we're gonna be twenty one, make, we're actually gonna need it. We meet the side yard, we meet this side yard, we meet the rear. And we meet all the lot coverage in open area and number of stories and height. So I, I just want to let the board know, it's not like, oh, were you doing this, but now you're creating a new non-conformity or something. It's, it's nothing's. It's really, the, the setbacks have not. Changed, they still, they still comply.
So do we just call this a? Minor modification and that we accept it?
Yeah, I think, so um, what the board's. Decision basically said, you know, as you do on findings, because we were a little loose on this, because you, you kind of encouraged him to change the uh. To change the design. So um. Let me just see exactly what the language was that you used. And how you want to handle it from, from uh, Ben's perspective. Stay with me for one second.
Well, we can just say that the, the proposed new plan. Still fits within our finding.
Yeah, I think that's what you, I think that's what you'd say. I think it would really be a letter to Ben saying that, because he's gonna look at. You know, Gil knows, he's gonna look at these plans, right? Gil, he's gonna say, what the heck is this? So um. So I think that he's gonna want something like that, Chip. Let me just tell you what the condition said in the decision and you guys can make the. Get it right here. You're looking for. That's what it said, is the reconstructed new two-family drawings shall substantially comply with the site plan and architectural drawings. Uh, the board retains jurisdiction to approve minor amendments to this decision that did not materially alter the terms. If, if the board's judge of proposed changes material, then a new hearing shall be required. Um, so perhaps you would say that, you know, you, you, you've reviewed these.
That, that. And that we don't find the material or need for a new.
Yeah, yeah. That they're, they're.
So Mr. Chairman, I move that we have looked at the new, new diagrams and deem that what they're doing is not more detrimental and still is within our finding, and they should be allowed to move forward. If Ben deems that appropriate.
Brian, do you need that material language, you think? It's not a material modification?
Yep.
Rather than the more detrimental language?
Yeah, they, yeah, because what you, I think what you're saying, Greg, you want to stay within the, within the decision.
Yeah, it's, yeah, because that
Yeah.
Doing it the other way is essentially a new decision.
And the board retains jurisdiction to approve any minor amendments to this decision and not materially alter the terms, so it would be that what the change in the plan is, is a minor amendment, and it materially, it does not materially alter the terms, because we're, we're, it's still, it's still not substantially more detrimental. So we can kind of.
As stated.
There we go.
You okay with that?
Waiting for that, yeah. Go ahead.
Greg's thinking about it, hold on.
No, 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 I'm not thinking.
Yep. Well, I already thought that wasn't, it's just going or not, actually.
So the updated motion is stated, can I second?
Uh, second, do you need to update the uh, you mentioned the updated plans?
Yep. Yep. I do.
Dated whatever.
Uh, Paul Finocchio's plan is dated um, revised nine thirteen twenty-two. And the architectural plan is a dated nine twelve twenty-two. Done by the same company, Mac Design LLC.
Okay, so the modifications as noted in the plans.
Yes, yep, I second that.
Okay, thank you, any discussion on the motion? Alright, voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I to vote yes. Okay. I think one more for you, Brian.
Yep.
Relating to case twenty dash four, five, and six of two fifty-nine Water Street, also a minor modification.
Peter here?
Here.
Oh, there you are, it's down here?
I don't see him and I texted him.
Well, then, then you're up.
I'm up.
Now, this is, this is involving the Akari project uh, on Water Street, two fifty-nine Water Street, multifamily. And Peter, as you know, has been overseeing construction, and Anthony's had a hard time with materials and one specific type of material that Peter's going to talk to you about, um, and, and I'll pipe into, so Pete, go ahead.
It's the uh, it's the granite herbing in the parking lot. It's having a hard time, they, the uh, contracts are having a very hard time finding it. Um, and this time of year, as you know, everybody gets antsy about the cold and the frost, so he asked, they asked if we could come back in and ask for a minor mod to go with the formed uh, concrete curbing and not the granite. Uh, so that we're able to move forward with the parking lot. They're pretty far along inside the building and the siding is probably seventy-five percent, so it, there was a lull, but it's come a long way in the few months to getting close to completion. Um, but the parking lot needs work now.
So, so the problem I have, Peter, is I agree, I've heard that there's a problem with granite curbing. But I'm curious to see who they've called, how hard they've tried to find it, or what the price differential is. And my bet is it's a combination of the two, that it's a lot easier to find the concrete, it's a lot cheaper than the granite. And I'm just not convinced you can't find it. I mean Fletcher has plenty, Swenson has plenty. I mean, I, I, I know that the big highway pro- are trouble, but you know, I saw two trailers of granite curbing going down the road the other day, it's around.
It's a scheduling.
I just, I don't, I don't buy, I don't buy it, I don't mean to slam you with it.
But I'm not.
No, it's okay, and I had asked them to come for the same reason, to speak to you with those, where did you go, where did you call?
Yeah. I, I think what happened is my, if I'm my guessing man, the, 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 whoever the site guy is made a call, and they're like, oh, you know, that, that's real expensive now, and he's like, oh, let's do concrete. But so, I'm not ready to give in quite yet. And they should have come and sung their tune if they wanted to not put you on the spot.
Okay. Grab here.
You didn't answer me, I just thought I'd check.
That's okay, so I mean, you know, bottom line is, I mean, I think the answer, Peter, is that nobody's here to, to talk to the board about the specifics aspects of it. So the board, you know, the board, i- we can come back in two weeks if they want to come back, but the board's not prepared to approve that change now.
Okay.
Because they don't have enough information, right, right, gentlemen?
Yeah, and at that point, I want to know who they called. And who's telling them it's not available?
Yeah, I, I've had a conversation with Raul, and he says, yes, it's difficult to get, but we're getting it. It's all about scheduling. You know, get it, get it ordered far enough, you don't, if you don't have it, you know, maybe you had to order it six months in advance as opposed to two months in advance, but that's not our problem.
And if they've made calls in between this meeting and the next meeting, don't just sit on their laurels.
You got a pick?
Okay. Alright.
Alright, so we'll table that one, alright.
Thank you.
Alright, that, that's it for you, Brian, I think, anything else that wasn't on the agenda or not anticipated when the agenda was posted?
No, thank you, we made up time.
Cool. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright. So our last item for the evening in terms of uh, who matters, and then we've got a couple administrative things, is uh, sixty-three Bay State Road, AT&T, and Mr. Freeman, I think, has been very patient with us.
Dish wireless.
What's that?
Dish wireless is for this application.
Oh, okay, the, the agenda says AT&T, my apologies, okay. Alright, so do you have something you can share for us and just describe what's, what's being proposed, and we'll go from there?
So uh, as stated, this application is for sixty-three Bay State Road. Uh, dish wireless is, is, will be co-locating um, on existing tower at this location, um. And basically, this is, this is under the, the sixty-four oh nine act, which is the, the middle class tax relief and job creation act of twenty uh, twenty-twelve, um, we're not expanding the height of the tower. Uh, there will be a minor expansion of the compound to uh, accommodate, dish wireless is um, uh, ground space uh, for their, for their platform, which is be five by seven uh, concrete, or excuse me, steel platform uh, seen right here, um, but with that said, it is within the confines of the sixty-four oh nine act. Uh, because we're not increasing or protruding the, the tower more than twenty feet in uh, the existing um, the existing the existing uh, compound, so in that, with that said, we would be within the, the confines of, of stating that dish wireless does actually meet these expectations of the sixty-four oh nine act. As stated here, that the tower shall improve both facility for modifications of existing tower, base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station.
Did you have a picture you can show on your screen, just so, for the, for the record, anyone viewing this?
I apologize, I thought, I thought I was sharing. So, it's not, you, you guys don't see my screen?
No, we see you.
Yeah, no, should be able to grab it, everyone should be able to grab it.
I apologize.
No worries.
Alright, let's have one of them. Well. A little late here. Alright, so share a screen. I'm not sure why it's not taking. Because of clicking on.
There we go.
Oh, okay. I apologize for for that, so these are the drawings that I was referring to, um. This is the, this is, this wireless is a proposed um, steel platform, which would be bumped out of the existing, the existing fenced in area, it'd be an additional five feet and four inches. Um, as stated before, with the sixty-four oh nine act, um, we're not substantially changing the physical dimensions of the base station or the tower. In reference to the, the rat center of the antennas. We would be lower than every single carrier currently on the pole. As you can see, we've been at rat center of seventy-one feet, the current height of the pole, as you can see here. Excuse me, is um, hundred and five feet with a lightning rod at eleven, a hundred and eleven feet.
And this is the regular tower, this, the, this isn't the one that's pretending to be a Christmas tree, right? Yeah, okay.
First page, it's.
Yep, yep.
So we would be sitting, you know, underneath this, the lowest uh, antenna array.
Okay. Any comments or questions, board members? Again, we continue to get these regularly, everyone's updating their service or adding to fill a gap somewhere, so pretty straightforward. Okay. Um, I.
So Mr. Chairman.
Uh, well, just for the record, I don't see members of the public here, so there's no
Oh, okay.
Opportunity to offer any comment at this point, I think it's just us. Um, but do you have, um, do you have the language that you would potentially need to, to make the?
I do.
Okay.
I do. So I move that we grant the uh, approval to dish wireless for modifications to the existing cell tower facility located at sixty-three Bay State Road. Because after review of the correspondence plans and materials provided by dish wireless, the dish wireless representative, we, the board, found that the proposed addition of three antennas, one per sector and six RRUs, two per sector, and one OVP box and associated cables to the tower in accordance with the plans prepared by Hudson Design Group LLC dated March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two. Site number BOBO SOO six oh eight A, site name Wakefield. Bay State satisfied the standards for an eligible facility's request of existing wireless tower or base station accordance with six four oh nine of the middle class tax relief and job act of two thousand and twelve.
Thank you, any discussion on that motion? Alright, regular voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that is unanimous. So I'll sign the letter that you need, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you so much.
Um, it'll be in the record, I'll get this filed back to, to Gail or at the building department um, the next day or so. And uh, you'll be able to obtain a copy that you need for your.
Thank you, guys, thank the board, I appreciate it.
Alright, appreciate your patience, we're a busy board these days. And these things tend to, tend to fall uh, last in the agenda or later in the agenda.
I understand, we're not on priority.
Yeah. Alright, have a good night, sir.
Have a good one.
Alright, board members, any clerk or board comments tonight? Any updates, any news?
My, my quick question was, should at some point we not put these at the very end?
I was thinking the same thing.
And put them at the beginning and just get them done? Because it is kind of a new hearing.
Oh, these cell tower ones?
Yeah.
Oh, we can.
Why, why, why do they go to the end?
Um, to just fall into other matters, we could, I mean, some of the other matters sometimes we take upfront because of a representation and
No, I know, I just feel like so on, you know, these are usually so quick now.
Yep.
That we shouldn't make them wait till midnight. In my opinion.
Alright, sounds good next time, fine by me.
Up to you.
Uh, that's fine.
Or the new chair.
I mentioned it to Gail last week, I go, I feel bad that, I feel like these guys should just go first.
Well, we'll keep it in mind next time, remind me, you guys get the agenda too, remind me if I forget, we'll, we'll take them up front. Um, but it seems like we're getting one every meeting or every other meeting, so.
Yeah.
Um, my only other, my only comment tonight is um, I know on the town council's meeting tonight, on their agenda is um, they're going to request that Cherry post um, for applications for the full um, board member seat that Amy just vacated, so assuming they approve it and she'll post it, look for it. If you're interested, um, maybe send in an application to make sure your name in there. Um, and then we'll see if anyone else applies, but um, uh, that, that meeting was tonight as well, so I don't know the outcome, but we'll find out soon enough. Okay. Anything else from others?
I move that we approve the minutes of September fourteenth. September fourteenth.
Second.
And they got him, and Gail, you amended that, right?
I did.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, it was actually in Brian's letter that, but then there were other things that could continue to October twelfth, I'm like, wait a minute, let me check the date.
Yeah.
Which is. I think that was, I think that might have been whoever was filling in.
My fault.
Thanks, Greg, you didn't throw me under the bus, I threw myself under.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the minutes, was there a second?
Yeah, second, yeah.
Second, thanks, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 alright, good. Um, motion returns always in order.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Goodbye. Do we know, just real quickly, do we know the dates for November and December yet?
Oh, shoot, um.
Alright, we'll talk about it next time.
Don't do it November ninth, I won't be here. No, it's supposed to be the sixteenth and the fourteenth.
And the fourteenth, yeah, I went by last year.
Sixteenth and fourteenth, but double check your calendars, make sure you can attend.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Because I'll need to know, because the filing date for November would be October eighteenth, so that's kind of coming up, so I'd have to, you know, post it online and stuff, so.
Can't we just decide right now that those are fine and we got enough members that people will be around?
Anyone overprobue November sixteenth or December fourteenth, looking at their calendars? Okay. Welcome. Welcome, Gail.
Okay, good.
Alright, alright, everyone, this meeting is adjourned, thank you for your time tonight, we'll talk to you all soon.
Thank you.